Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this June ninth, 2022 Beaufort County School Board regular monthly meeting to order. Ms. Johnson, will you please take the roll?
Kirby?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mrs. Harrison?
Here.
Mr. Holbrook? Dr. Mealy?
Here.
Mr. Nelms?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Hill. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Second by Mr. Daniels. Any discussion? Call for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Madam Chair, pursuant, I make a motion that pursuant to Code of Virginia two dot two dash thirty seven eleven A one three dash one to discuss the assignment, appointment, performance, discipline, and release of contract for specific school board employees, including the evaluation of the superintendent as provided in his contract of employment. Three, for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Have a motion by Mr. Hill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harrison. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're in closed session.
Do I have a motion to come out of closed session?
I have a motion.
I have a motion by Dr. Mealy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelms, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Where it's the Bedford County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bedford County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And there was nothing to take in action on, so we're going to skip over that part. And unfortunately due to us taking so long in closed session, we're going to go ahead and adjourn for dinner and then we will pick up with, well, we'll pick up with, when we can pick up, we're going to move 4.01 on down to the seven o'clock agenda, is that correct? Okay. Well, let's adjourn for dinner then.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene this June 9th meeting of the Beffer County School Board. If you would please rise for the pledge of allegiance. The flag is here at the corner of the stage. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could please, I'd like to observe a moment of silence for all those affected by the Uvalde shooting. Thank you very much. Mr. Edwards, this is always a fun time of the evening. Recognition of students and staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And would you and Dr. Bergen please come forward to the center of the stage? Also, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Tonight, we recognize the following students who have recently achieved excellence. Skills USA is a partnership of students, teachers, and industry, working together to ensure America has a skilled workforce. A nonprofit national education association, Skills USA serves middle school, high school, and college post-secondary students preparing for careers in trade, technical, and skilled service occupations. And our own students from Susie Gibson's Science and Technology Center are a fixture at the competition each year. William Wood competed in the Skills USA State Automotive Maintenance and Light Repair Competition and earned his spot by winning the district-level competition in Franklin County. A junior, he competed against more experienced seniors from all across the Commonwealth. State runner-up in automotive maintenance and light repair, William Wood. Round of applause for Mr. Wood, please. And Timothy Nichols is a senior who placed third in the Building Maintenance District Competition. He then upped his game and went on to play second at state-level competition in Virginia Beach. State runner-up in Building Maintenance, Timothy Nichols. Aiden Wortman is a senior who placed first in the Secondary Division of the Skills USA District Competition. He went on to place first in the Post-Secondary Building Maintenance Division of the Skills USA State Level Competition. And he'll be competing in the Skills USA National Leadership Competition in Atlanta, Georgia later this month as well. Building Maintenance State Champion, Anthony Utley. And finally, tonight, we turn our attention to Future Farmers of America State Competition and Stanton River High School. Tractor driving competition requires students to demonstrate their skills in diagnosing tractor maintenance problems, safety, and operating skills through written and practical exams, as well as operating a tractor with both a two- and four-wheel wagon attached. Cody Burnett competed in the Senior Hub Federation Tractor Driving Contest in March and was named the winner. He then got first in the South Ridge Area Rally Contest and moved on to get first place at the State Tractor Driving Contest. Cody will represent Virginia FFA at the National Big E Tractor Driving Contest in Massachusetts later this fall. State Champion Tractor Driver, Stanton River High School's Cody Burnett.
Students' talents never cease to amaze me. Okay, we're going to move on to the public comment period of tonight's meeting. The public hearing portion of tonight's meeting, of tonight's agenda, is limited to 180 minutes. Speakers are asked to state their
Aiden Wortman is a senior who placed first in the Secondary Division of the Skills USA District Competition. He went on to place first in the Post-Secondary Building Maintenance Division of the state-level competition in Virginia Beach, and he'll be competing in the Skills USA National Leadership Competition in Atlanta, Georgia later this month. Building Maintenance State Champion, Aiden Wortman. Anthony Utley is an elevated senior who placed first in district-level competition, and he then went on to place first in the Post-Secondary Building Maintenance Division of the Skills USA State-level competition. Anthony will be competing in the Skills USA National Leadership Competition in Atlanta, Georgia later this month as well. Building Maintenance State Champion, Anthony Utley. And finally, tonight, we turn our attention to Future Farmers of America State Competition and Stanton River High School. Tractor driving competition requires students to demonstrate their skills in diagnosing tractor maintenance problems, safety, and operating skills through written and practical exams, as well as operating a tractor with both a two- and four-wheel wagon attached. Cody Burnett competed in the Senior Hub Federation Tractor Driving Contest in March and was named the winner. He then got first in the South Ridge Area Rally Contest and moved on to get first place at the State Tractor Driving Contest. Cody will represent Virginia FFA at the National Big E Tractor Driving Contest in Massachusetts later this fall. State Champion Tractor Driver, Stanton River High School's Cody Burnett.
Students' talents never cease to amaze me. Okay, we're going to move on to the public portion, public comment period of tonight's meeting. The public hearing portion of tonight's meeting, of tonight's agenda is limited to 180 minutes. Speakers are asked to state their name and voting district. The school board is here to listen to your comments but will not engage or respond to speakers during this 180-minute period. This portion of the meeting is designated for public comments regarding the seven...
Forty minutes.
No, it says 180.
I may have put the wrong paper in your folder, Madam Chair.
Oh. Oh, okay. Then I'm reading from the wrong section. How many minutes is it?
Forty minutes. The rest of the, the rest of what's on the paper should be correct.
Thank y'all, I'm just, I'm reading.
My apologies, Madam Chair.
I thought it was very many, but you know. I was just reading. Hooked on Phoenix is working for me, man, I was going. Okay, so let's start this over. Can I, can I use the same thing?
Yeah, the rest of it should be correct, except just the, there was the length of the minutes was the only thing that's not right.
Okay, perfect. Wait a minute, here's another change before I get going. Okay. The public comment portion of tonight's agenda is limited to 40 minutes. Got it right now. Speakers are asked to state their name and voting district. The school board is here to listen to your comments but will not engage or respond to speakers during this 40-minute period. This portion of the meeting is designated for public comments regarding, oh, no, wait a minute, another error. Please remember that this is a public meeting and that we expect all speakers to refrain from any foul, abusive, or hateful language. Mr. Edwards will serve as the timekeeper for individual speakers with a ringing bell indicating that person has 30 seconds remaining, and a second bell will ring indicating a person's four minutes have expired. Mr. Edwards will also serve as the timekeeper for the cumulative 40-minute period. When Mr. Edwards' four-minute timer bell rings, please discontinue speaking and allow the next person in line to come to the podium. Should you be unable to finish your comments, please send or give them to Mrs. Johnson, and she will give them to board members. Please do not adjust the microphone at the podium, for it has been positioned for optimum audio quality. Okay, with that finally being said, Dr. Cherie Whitehurst is our first speaker this evening.
Good evening, my name is Cherie Whitehurst, and I live in District 7. I saw online that several of our school board members recently viewed the documentary, Whose Children Are They? I also had the opportunity to view this film. This documentary features teachers, parents, grandparents, college professors, politicians, plaintiffs from lawsuits, lawyers, and others sharing their views about education. A theme of the documentary is that communism has gotten a stronghold into our educational system through teachers' unions. Karl Marx is quoted saying, "The education of all children from the moment they can get along without a mother's care shall be in the state's institutions." Rebecca Fredericks, a plaintiff in a recent lawsuit, says, "The communists through Dewey and the teachers' unions intentionally undermine our educational system." Karen Coon, party in the above-mentioned lawsuit, says, "Why are teachers, administrators, and unions all of the sudden thinking that they own these kids?" Deborah Flora, actress and US Senate candidate for Colorado, argues, "When we look at this radical agenda, the way our children are being exploited, and the way our parents are being shut out, it comes down to one fundamental question: Whose children are they?" The documentary exposes a radical agenda that should be concerning to all Americans, and we should be on guard against that agenda's influences in our community. But fortunately, in Bedford County, we have a strong foundation that limits such a radical agenda. First, we live in a state where our state law says a parent has a fundamental right to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of the child, of the parent's child. So in Virginia, the answer to whose children are they is clear: They are the parent's children. Second, teachers in Bedford County have never been unionized. There's a volunteer-based professional association called the Bedford County Education Association. This association is like the Virginia School Boards Association, to which each of our school board members belong. The school board members' dues, however, are paid for by the district or the taxpayers. The budget adopted this past spring, our school board members approved, that $29,000 be used for division-wide association and professional dues. The documentary also describes the influence of our teachers' unions regarding instructional materials and curriculum used to promote a radical agenda. Nevertheless, in Bedford County, it is our school board and not a teachers' union who is in charge of instruction and curriculum. Specifically, according to Policy IIIA, our school board is responsible for the selection and use of instructional materials, and according to Policy IIIA, our school board is responsible for the adoption of printed and electronic textbooks. Through these policies, the school board is empowered to protect our children from the incursion of a radical agenda. I encourage those who have not seen the documentary, Whose Children Are They?, to do so. It will be shown in the town of Bedford at Word of Life Evangelical Church on July 23rd at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Whitehurst. Dave Dietrich.
I'm Dave Dietrich from the 4th District of Forest. Ladies and gentlemen, what should students read? Great books with great thoughts that enlighten the mind while pursuing truth should be paramount. Great books include both nonfiction and fiction, providing comprehensive exposure to myriad of ideas and literary genre. Great books teach literature, science, mathematics, art, history, philosophy, and many other subjects. Great books advance knowledge, critical thinking acumen, and virtue. The Roman historian Livy wrote, "History illuminates for us what to imitate and what to mark for avoidance." Reading great books follows Livy, exposing students to the good and the bad. Today, what gets read is determined more or less by a faceless centralized bureaucratic process. That process culminates in the so-called AP List of Recommended Readings. Largely, the list is based on readings favored by academics, many of whom are postmodernists, but not all. Postmodern academics recommend postmodern books. Think about that. The AP Reading List imposes the prevailing postmodern ideas of today. What are some of those ideas? They include critical theory, group grievances, social justice, nihilism, deconstructionism, equity, and cultural relativeness, to cite a few. The AP Reading List is also substantially different than traditional lists of great books of the Western thought. When students read postmodern books, they also are not exposed to many of these great books. Great books of the Western thought are emphasized by classical institutions such as Hillsdale College and St. John's in Annapolis. Those scholars will include Socrates, Plato, Aristotle, Livy, Thomas Aquinas, Shakespeare, Jefferson, Douglas, and many more. In the world of postmodernism, many of the great originators of the Western thought are discarded, replaced by writers who might be deemed more politically correct for postmodern perspectives. Postmodern authors also tend to emphasize themes and messages alien to the Western tradition. In the words of the late scholar Allan Bloom, "The intellectual departure away from the Western tradition has marked the closing of the American mind." To Bloom, the liberally educated person is one who is able to resist the easy and preferred answers, not because he is obstinate, but because he knows others worthy of consideration. That is what the Western tradition has taught for centuries. Today, illumination of the mind and the molding of the virtuous spirit are often replaced with communal thinking, group grievances, unforgiveness, and often vulgar images and commentary. Thus, today's Athenian youth are corrupted not by Socrates, but by the authoritarian visions of Kurt Vonnegut's Diana Moon clambers. And our children, students, community, and society suffer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Mary Catherine Bennett. Okay, doesn't look like Ms. Bennett's here. Erin Farrell. Amy Snead.
Good evening, I'm Amy Snead, District 7. I'm speaking on behalf of Moms for Liberty. I wanted to share some suggestions for all of you as the discussions continue about the content of books and curriculum in our libraries. I understand that decisions are still being made with how to notify parents and what their students will be reading in both class and in the library, so I wanted to offer some resources that I thought would be helpful. As you know, these conversations are happening across the country, and I'm excited to share with you what some of the sites that have developed to help. It's completely understandable that our librarians and administration and teachers cannot be expected to read every single book in the library, but concerned citizens and parents have risen to the occasion to help. It's a big task, but this is a start. Organizations such as Booklook.info, Booklooks.org, and YouthAdvisoryRatings.org have devoted countless hours to creating documents that allow us to see the content of books at a quick glance. It is very important that parents take the lead on this and take the time to read the information sent home by their teachers. Talk to your kids about what they are reading, but I'll be honest, a quick Google search often does not provide a lot of help in seeing what the true content is of the books. You're often provided with a glowing review to entice you to read the book without any real substance of its content. So here's where these sites step in to help. Let's take the book Monday's Not Coming by Tiffany Jackson. I chose this book because in a recent conversation with former Bedford County Sheriff Mike Brown, he brought this book to my attention as an example of a grooming technique, and I'll share more on that in just a minute. This book is located in Bedford County Public Schools. If a parent sees that their child has chosen this book from the library, they can use one of these sites to see if the book has been reviewed. This one has, so a short summary is provided at a quick glance. A rating is given, and page numbers and passages are cited to provide details on the ratings given. There's also a quick glance synopsis of language used. For example, in this book, the B-word is used four times, the F-word is used 19 times, and the S-word is used 24 times. This summary was provided by Booklook.info. To quote former Sheriff Mike Brown, "The passages from this reading is what any investigator from any Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force would call a grooming technique that child sexual predators or human traffickers use that is subtle, gradual, and eventually an escalating process." For example, a groomer might say, "See, the school even has material that indicates what I need you to do is okay." He was referencing a particular passage from Monday's Not Coming. These types of scenarios are what parents need to be aware of in what their children are reading and to have a say as to whether or not they can read it. The other site I mentioned, RatedBooks.org, provides a similar style of review. So for example, one of the books I requested be reviewed back in November was The Glass Castle by Jeanette Walls. It was required reading for 10th grade English at Liberty High School. This provides a similar summary with passages that are sexually explicit and a list of summary of profanity, as well as a category of, quote, "red flags" for parents. In this book, those included masturbation, molestation, sexual assault, physical abuse, extreme violence, bigotry, alcohol and drug use, extreme profanity, condemnation of Christianity, mental health issues, extreme poverty, child abuse, abandonment, neglect, solicitation of prostitutes, and adult situations. The conclusion that they recommended is that this book is not recommended for K-12 schools. Another site created a zero-to-five rating system, which is very similar to a movie system. A zero would be like a G-rated movie, four or five would be an NC-17 movie. These ratings help us all be informed of the content in a way that protects the student from graphic materials, just the same as movies or music is rated. A reader cannot make a choice to not read offensive content if they aren't made aware of its presence. Sheriff Brown said he would hazard a guess, based on his 22-years experience in this dark arena, that predators have, or will have, copies of these books as reference sources for their grooming techniques. And I want you to know, I'm happy to provide any further information on these sites or how they could be implemented, and each of you will have a copy of all of this information in your email tonight, so I really appreciate all the time and effort you've put into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snead. Christian Snead.
Christian Snead, District 7. Last month, I spoke about how I had appreciation for the teachers, nurses, and staff. I just want to reiterate that to the teachers, that the community sees the good that you're doing, that you are noticed, that you are respected, and that you are loved. I have a special place for teachers. I think it comes from the fact that when I moved to Bedford over 15 years ago, I aspired to be a teacher. I actually attended a job fair at Bedford Elementary back in 2007. I sought to be a teacher, much the same reason the teachers are in school today, to make a difference, to make a positive change, to impact the kids that they make the best version of themselves possible, while adding value to the community they live in. I myself am a product of public education, local community college, and eventually obtained a psychology degree from James Madison in 2002. While I was born in Virginia, I have been a learner in the states as far south as Louisiana and as far north as New Jersey. Furthermore, public education means a lot. See, it's what put food on the table for my family for many generations. Growing up, I thought you could be three things: You could be a soldier, a teacher, or a truck driver. On my mother's side, my grandfather taught English and French in Virginia and Maryland his entire career, both in public and private schools. In addition, he was the vice principal for a number of years. He was also a member of the NEA, the VEA, the ACEA, and the BRTC. Eventually, he retired from Augusta County School System and became the president of the Virginia Retired Teachers Association in 93 and 94. My grandmother spent her life teaching at the same time raising seven children. She taught English and home economics in both Maryland and Virginia. My mother had a degree in early childhood education. She taught first and fourth grades in Kansas and Virginia, and then she also spent her late nights at the dinner table with my brothers and myself. So that's just on my mom's side. There are 12 other members of our family that I haven't mentioned here tonight for the purpose of time. So last month, it pained me to see teachers and staff last month mention that teachers don't feel validated or supported. Isn't there someone that can help address these concerns? So last month, I did speak with Christina Childress, the president of the BCA, after last month's meeting, and I was surprised to find out that only 200 people are part of a group that has a qualified pool of over 1,000 people as potential people for their pool. Trying to figure out why the participation would show low, I asked myself, is it the cost? Is it the benefits? Is it the views or the values? Mathematically, that's two out of 10 teachers that enroll in this program. Are there other organizations or associations that might offer a different voice or benefit or align with a more of a majority of Bedford County's teachers' views? So just like Bethany Hughes mentioned last month, the loudest voices you hear aren't the only ones to consider, so please listen to them all. Kristi Honeycutt also said last month, "Our voices are still not heard, and our opinions don't feel like they matter." This is why I got involved with two noneducational school board members, because they had children in the school systems. They graduated from Bedford County School System, and they wanted to speak for the silenced. Our focus should always be remaining on the children, the teachers' tools and measurements of success, to attract the best teaching talent and provide the best ROI for every single taxpayer, every single taxpayer that funds these schools. So the label that some of us have been given that are unprofessional, anti-public education extremists that want to utterly dismantle the public education built on CRT conspiracy theories, anti-mass propaganda that are well-funded by the GOP extremists, whatever that is, is simply not true. We're the same ones that performed an organized Teacher Appreciation Week. We're the same ones that were part of the PTA, support underprivileged families, families without recognition, coach recreational sports, and serve on local school boards, even run copies and assist teachers. See, I'm pro-parent. I'm pro-teacher, and I'm pro-education. And believe it or not, all three of those things can exist at the exact same time. Just because we have different views, it doesn't mean that we don't want the same thing, and that's what's best for our children. So I hope the teachers of Bedford County can find a support system to advance their voice and their concerns. They sure could use the help.
Thank you, Mr. Snead. Cindy Younghouse.
Good evening, I'm Cindy Younghouse. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. I have students Forrest Middle and J.F. Pretty sure that makes us District 4, and Marcus Hill are representing... Pretty sure that makes us District 4, and Marcus Hill are representative. Mr. Hill, according to the bylaws of the school board, you are responsible to the people of your division for the education of their youth. Unfortunately, your views recorded in school board meetings and related policy proposals are not representative of my family. For example, we do not support banning books or classroom censorship. We want our students to have access to age-appropriate, quality literature, some of which might happen to have sexual or LGBTQ content or other possibly controversial ideas. Related to banning books, we do not support misusing and weaponizing critical race theory in order to ban or sanitize important truths of history or social studies so that white Christian folks won't be offended. Awareness of our faults in an age-appropriate context helps us create a more perfect union for everyone in the future. So then, we want our students in public schools to compete globally within this global society and not stuck in a limiting, theocratically-induced bubble which would put BCPs students at a disadvantage. Even as a Christian family, we do not want the Bible to be the source and standard for policy and educational content in our public schools, as suggested by certain members here. The Bible is too easily repurposed for punitive agendas, inevitably discriminating against LGBTQ individuals or students with differing belief systems who simply need safety and acceptance. The Bible and public school policy promotes pietism rather than the peace of the gospel and Christ's love for all people. Absolutely, we do support our amazing teachers and staff who need wage increases rather quickly, approved by the Board of Supervisors, and strict limits on the uncompensated time expectations. Revisions to the board policy, staff time schedules are needed. The 25% consideration proposal, as presented by the BCEA president, needs your approval and subsequent implementation prior to 2223. Then, due to the student and community benefits provided by the impressive J.F. auditorium, it is only fair, the students and communities of Liberty and Stanton River High Schools have updated auditoriums as well. We support appropriation of needed funds from the county. It will be worth it for the arts and everyone involved. And while we do support the role a parent plays in the upbringing and education of their own children, we also support the idea that teachers are professionals and need freedom to teach a variety of subject matter, some of which may be difficult and necessarily controversial at age-appropriate levels. Consequently, concepts of personal political bias, grooming, and indoctrination is found in a section of the Parents' Rights Resolution need clarification, preferably before tonight's vote, please. These concepts ironically are intrinsically politically biased already since they are being frivolously thrown about by conservatives to ban anything deemed remotely progressive or liberal rather than applied to actual student safety. Learning about true history, science of gender, about complex controversial concepts, and about acceptance of others, all within an age-appropriate context, are not grooming or indoctrination. Finally, we support the school board also affirming their commitment to the rights of staffs and teachers by passing the resolution in support of teachers and staff proposed by Dr. Mulligan at the last meeting. So, Mr. Hill, these are some examples how your views are not ours. Please find a way to represent my family, too. Also, congratulations to the grads, and Happy Pride Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Younghouse.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Amanda Dean, and while I live on the outskirts of Bedford County in the city of Lynchburg, my parents reside in District 4. I graduated from Jefferson Forest High School, and I just completed my eighth year as a teacher at Forrest Middle School. Growing up, I found my passion and love in the dance studio. I spent my evenings growing in technique, weekends, and the competitive dance circuit, and I grew to love the arts, the stage, and any opportunity I had to perform. In 1994, I met Shayna Cruz, the current director of Liberty High School Performing Arts, in the dressing room at the dance studio. Although I did not know her well, our paths crossed many times since our first encounter at the studio. In 2019, I remember sitting at the Teacher of the Year recognition dinner as we both represented our schools, thinking, "I really wish I could see her in action someday in the classroom." Well, 2022 arrived, and that someday became a reality, when she asked if my dog Chip would play Toto in Liberty High School's production of The Wizard of Oz. Now, that is something I never thought I'd say. Yet, there I was, hesitant to commit as I was terrified that my five-and-a-half-pound dog might ruin her show, but Shayna was persistent, confident, and I eventually caved and agreed. Chip, or should I say Toto, had just started attending rehearsals when Emily came out to film for the Living in the Heart of Virginia segment. Given that the start time of this filming overlapped with my dismissal time at FMS, my parents brought Chip out here that afternoon. When I arrived, my dad was sitting right here in the front row, engaged in a group text with all of his high school friends. What were they discussing? The fact that his granddog was performing in this auditorium that looked the exact same as it did when they graduated from here in 1974. As a teacher in the forest zone, it is so incredibly easy for me to love and support the students in that zone because I shared at least one year of growth and learning with so many of them and their families. I am not really sure what I expected coming out here to Liberty for their show, but I do want to share my experience with you this evening. While my dog thought he was living his best theater life, complete with his own personal makeshift dressing room right backstage or on the stage itself, where at any given moment he could find slices of turkey, cheese, or hamburger that perhaps he missed picking up during a scene here or scene there. The reality is that his perception and luxurious stage life didn't quite match that of his director or newfound friends and cast members. In between luring Chip onstage to be picked up by Dorothy or grabbing him from the basket as he exited the stage on the back of a bicycle, there was plenty of time for me to just observe during both rehearsals and shows. During the Friday night show, I watched as the cast gathered in the hall during intermission after we had just lost power. There, they verbally re-blocked much of Act 2 to accommodate for the fact that the downpour of rain would keep them from being able to enter from various locations in the auditorium as rehearsed. During the Saturday night show, I watched as cast members constantly stood on guard backstage to open and close the curtains as scenes ended and transitions occurred, all the while running from the classrooms or bathrooms that served as their dressing rooms. During the last show on Sunday afternoon, I found myself struggling to keep Toto occupied during extended intermission time as neither bathroom in the lobby was functioning and audience members had to exit to a different building here on campus just to use the restroom. As I reflected on this experience at the conclusion of the show, I found myself truly grateful. Grateful for the opportunity to be a part of their show, grateful for the opportunity to see Mrs. Cruz in action, and most importantly, grateful for the opportunity to fall in love with more incredible young people in our county. These same young people whom I credit with keeping my dog from ruining their show because they are nothing shy of true professionals onstage. My reflections also left me wanting more for this cast and ultimately led me to review the auditorium feasibility study presented December 9, 2021. From my experience, I couldn't agree more with the findings presented in that study. As we focus more on equity in our county, I ask that you, as you are able with funding, please consider updating the auditorium facilities here at Liberty High School and also at Stanton River High School. Mrs. Cruz has built an exceptional program that is currently limited by the facilities or lack thereof. After observing this firsthand and always trying to advocate for what is best for all students, I believe we can do better. Thank you for your time, for all that you do for our school system, and for all the hard, student-centered decisions that you make.
Thank you, Ms. Dean.
Hello. My name is Kylie Moplin. I live in District 4. I'm an 18-year-old high school graduate, but not long ago, I was a sophomore at J.F. I was a runner for JFXC, our cross-country team, which was my home for three straight years. My team was comprised of my closest friends, as well as others who were basically my family. Every day, we would go out in the agonizing sun, and we would run, and talk, and laugh, and just be happy. But of course, that happiness couldn't be unadulterated. On bus rides over to our home course every single day, there was an onslaught of homophobic slurs thrown around with ease, the kind of ease only a child with no challenges to their parents' bigotry could ever possess. It's not easily spotted, but that kind of environment makes for a really easy way to internalize homophobia. I always felt a little out of place on that team, even though there was seemingly no reason for me to. I finished what I didn't know was my last season of cross-country right before the pandemic began. I was and still am very strict about COVID restrictions, so in March of 2020, I started my quarantine ed and did not see anyone for any reason other than school until well into 2021. This being the case, I was also isolated from this echo chamber of hate speech and bigotry that my teammates had provided to me for several years. In that time, not only did I realize how much I hated the behavior of my teammates, but also that I had always felt so out of place because that homophobia was striking at me. I realized only when I was 17 years old that I was gay. For reference, I had started applying to colleges by then. I had been accepted to the University of Virginia before I even realized that I hadn't had my first kiss because I didn't want it to be with a boy. I lost all of my friends. All of the people I loved most got farther and farther away, and all I could do was watch. All of the other people in my life left, and it was only gay students who found me and gave me a new family, because they knew what it was to lose one. Homophobia stole a large portion of my childhood, and compared to others in my community, I am lucky, because lord knows, others have lost far worse. A distinguished comedian who I love and a prominent member of the LGBTQ activism movement, Hannah Gadsby, once said, "When you soak a child in shame, they cannot develop the neurological pathways needed to carry thoughts of self-worth." The spaces in which gay kids grow heavily influence whether they accept themselves. And it was and still is very clear that in my space and in yours, I am not allowed to be gay. It's inappropriate. It's disgusting. It's wrong. I'm wrong. I was a child, learning day in and day out that everything I felt was wrong. To you. But I've grown and now understand that anyone's views on who I am cannot change me. Please, stop trying to talk over the voices of LGBTQ students and instead talk to us. Allow me to be one of the first voices to invite you to a seat at the table where we can give and take, work together, and make this county a safe place for all students, especially those whose voices have been drowned out. Thank you for listening. Have a good day and Happy Pride Month.
Thank you, Ms. Moplin. Lilly Van Bergen.
Hello, my name is Lilly Van Bergen. I recently graduated from Jefferson Forest High School. I'm 18 years old, and I'm here today on my own accord, without any direct instruction from any parent, teacher, administrator, or other adult. I am here because I feel that I need to speak on an issue that seems to leave a sour taste in your mouths every time it's discussed. I am here to support and to speak for the members of the LGBTQ+ community who fear to speak for themselves, unlike Kylie here, who did an excellent job. If you hear nothing else today, please hear this. There are people in this community who support those who identify as LGBTQ+, and you need to pay attention to them, whether or not you understand them. Earlier this year, there were some challenges made to some books in our county relating to LGBTQ+ topics, essentially limiting how accessible some books and authors should be. You attempted to censor what you allowed us to read in fear of what it would teach us, what it would expose us to. I'm sure you thought that this decision was one that would reduce tensions between parents and that protected students, but in fact, it did the opposite. By making the decision to attempt to ban certain LGBTQ+ books, you showed us that you don't believe that anyone should be able to learn about, empathize with, or explore what it means to be a part of the LGBTQ+ community. You dismissed them, your own students. It has become clear that the opinions and beliefs of a few parents have infiltrated our governing board and that they have muddied the perceptions that you have of your own student body. These books are meant to offer a diversity of opinion and to shelter kids who are still exploring their sexuality. And it is so crucial to give these kids a place where they can go to feel safe, especially when they're not even accepted in their own homes. Make no mistake, they are accepted, and we will continue to do our best to make them feel accepted. And we will not stop until we stop seeing data that tells us that some kids are too afraid to go talk to a teacher, to use the bathroom because in fear of what someone might do to them in the hallways. Parents' voices are heard more often than any on this board, and it's not hard to figure out why. If a student is too scared to even go to school in fear of getting tormented by slurs and offensive words by their peers, how do you expect them to speak in front of you to ask for help? If you cannot offer your students unwavering support and set your own prejudices aside, there is no way for you to really be representative of all voices because you would be too far away to hear any one of them. In all honesty, it's sad that I have to be here today, and it's sad that I have to take time out of my own summer vacation to conference with you all to explain how you are crushing the ideals of equity and inclusivity in our community, based on what you think that our students want or believe. Parent voices have dominated this issue for too long, and they've begun a platform without pushback, allowing them to try to suppress an identity and convince you to strip students of their freedoms to openly express themselves, just because it's not what they think a relationship should look like. As a recently graduated student myself, I will continue to expect better from our school board members and their decisions until change is enacted and until each and every one of my fellow students is treated with the fairness and the respect that they deserve. All this being said, I do not place the burden solely on your shoulders, but today, I, among many other students, will be holding you accountable for the promises that you've made to maintain and uphold the student voices that deserve to be at the forefront of your decision-making process. In parting, I hope that the board members can recognize that they have a lot of work to do moving forward, as the motions that have transpired over the past school year did not champion the student ideals in our community. So if you seek consolation for the behaviors that you've tolerated in this past year, find solace in some of the same words that many of you have offered to my struggling peers in situations like these: hate the sin, love the sinner. Thank you, and I hope that next time we print one of these public reachings and in the back of the cover it says, "We do not discriminate on race, age, color," anything like that. Next time, I would like to add, "sexual orientation." That's the least I can ask. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Van Bergen. As you know, we had two that did not show, so I have space for two more speakers. Ms. Cruz, you're next on the list.
You can do it. Have faith in you.
Good evening. My name is Shayna Cruz, and I live in the city of Lynchburg. I am the director of Performing Arts here at Liberty High School. The 2021-22 school year marks my 10th year of teaching in secondary education. Before I started teaching at Liberty High School, no theater or dance electives existed. I have developed a culture and appreciation for the arts and instilled a sense of humanity at Liberty High School and in our community. I am constantly looking forward to new ways to present the material in theater and dance because the art form is always evolving. My primary focus of my educational vision is to develop my students' skills and techniques necessary to perform, design, and produce. Dance and drama in school played a very important role for me. This is why I have the desire to pass on the passion. In 2012, I was hired on as a part-time theater teacher and taught two Theater 1 classes. In 2013, I became a full-time teacher and began teaching Theater 2 as well. And in 2015, I implemented our dance electives, which are currently the only dance electives offered in Bedford County. Today, I am fortunate to teach Theater 1, 2, 3, and 4, Tech Theater 1 and 2, Dance 1 and 2, Advanced Dance and Dance Company. In the past 10 years, the Liberty High School Performing Arts Program has thrived, serving over 650 students. But our facilities have limitations: insufficient practice space and storage, limited use of rooms, and the current Chorus Black Box has antiquated lighting and sound technology and equipment. There is no actual space in this building to support the set construction that serves our tech theater students. This past season, we used the hallway out there to cut, design, and assemble new sets. The overall comfort of the auditorium has always been a concern. When patrons attend our productions, it is distinctly brought to my attention that the temperature was either too hot or too cold, the seats were very uncomfortable to sit in for two hours, our auditorium aisles are not lit in the dark, and is the slope ADA compliant? We also recently experienced during The Wizard of Oz, the plumbing issues in the building that caused our lobby restrooms to close, having patrons to use the restrooms in C Building. The performing arts are an important and necessary part of a well-rounded education, having impacts on students' academic, social, and emotional outcomes. No student in this county deserves to have the "make-do" mentality. Truly, it's the job of our school board to ensure that the students are never forced to adapt to a lesser circumstance. They should have the care for their students of their county to provide for them: best materials to support their education. materials to support their education, their passions, their extracurriculars, and their careers. Now it's time to talk about the fabulous opportunities for our students in the proposed new auditorium building. In classroom studios, we would see improved acoustics, soundproof practice and rehearsal spaces that don't interrupt other classes, sufficient and secure storage, and connected practice spaces in a fine arts wing. All of this with easier access to our performance stage and for transporting instruments, building drama sets, dance studio space, and equipment. Beyond the classroom, the benefits of a new state-of-the-art auditorium are many. There would finally be appropriate backstage costume and scenery spaces, proper dressing and makeup rooms, and modern lighting and sound equipment that would greatly enhance our students' performances. Safe stage rigging and design would also benefit our students, and a climate-controlled setting would provide consistency between performance and rehearsal space. This protects the district's and the families' investments. Liberty High School Performing Arts students, as well as Bedford County community, have much to gain from a new auditorium, and our students deserve a comfortable, safe space in which they can learn and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Time for one more. Glenn Smith?
My name is Glenn Smith. I'm from District Seven, and I am a former teacher here in the county. I'm here to advocate for full-time resource officers in each Bedford County school, which is currently not the case. There are several reasons for this. First of all, there have been killings in multiple and diverse schools across the country. Some of them have rocked the headlines here of late. Second, safety of our kids and grandkids should be our highest priority. Sometimes, the argument is made that there is only so much money to go around, and while this is true, it seems to me that there is nothing that should be allocated before the security and well-being of the students. Third, lockdowns and practicing drills, security cameras, secured doors, et cetera, are great, but only an armed officer can neutralize a shooter who has breached the other defenses. Some funds for school security are apparently coming from our state, so this will help defray the cost. And that, of course, is going to be, I'm sure, something that is brought up if this is taken to the Board of Supervisors here in the county. So for these and other reasons, please ask the Bedford Board of Supervisors for additional funds as needed, if needed, for a full-time security officer, school resource officer in every school in this county. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. And that fills our forty-minute period, so we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting. Move on to Item Eight, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chairman, I'm moved that we approved the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Dr. Mealy. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Daniels. I'll call for discussion. And I'm going to actually be the oddball out. I have a... Ms. Hagler, I don't mean to put you on hot seat, but I have a few questions, if you don't mind, please, sir. As I was looking through the bills for this month, a few of them kind of stuck out with me, and I just wanted to ask you what they were for.
Okay.
Talent Assessment Incorporated for Practical Assessments?
Can you tell me which bill list that was from?
Oh, goodness, I didn't make a note of that.
Sorry about that. Because I have all the bill lists there, but there are several presented there. And I will have to call in other staff members that might have approved that invoice and had budgetary authority on that.
If anybody can answer, I would be most appreciative.
What was the name of the firm again?
Talent Assessment, Inc.
Okay, and how much was that for?
Yeah, I thought... You all usually have all the answers, I assumed you would.
I know.
It was for Practical Assessments. I think it was to the tune of sixty thousand, maybe? Couple of these were sixty thousand range.
Okay, I'm looking at the bill list here real quick, at the several that we submitted, and...
Well, I'll go ahead and tell you the ones that I want to know what they're for, if at all possible.
Okay, thank you.
Talent Assessment, ALC Schools LLC, Discover Education, KLK Education Services, and those are the four.
Can you recognize those? The ALC is for the Transportation Department, where we outsource transportation to certain students that we don't have car drivers for, and so that's for the ALC. I knew that, which one that was.
Okay.
Did you recognize?
Okay.
So that was the Discovery one that had curriculum for instruction?
Mm-hmm.
So that's Discovery, ALC. What were the others?
Talent Assessment Incorporated and KLK Education Services.
Talent. Let me log into the system and look that one up real quick. Having trouble finding on the bill list. Five-four. Thank you.
I don't know what to make a note of next time. Thank you for your patience.
So I'm going to look...
That's the one for sixty-three thousand.
Talent.
Talent Assessment. Okay, I'm going to have to look that vendor up real quick and pull that invoice up, so you can give me a second here. Already connected. That was thirty-one thousand, correct? And KL was the other one?
KLK Education Services.
Does anybody know that one? Come on.
KLK is Dr. Kathy Kennedy. We used her as a consultant for strategic planning.
And there, I noticed so far that there have been three five-thousand-dollar payments to her. How much, what's going to be the total bill for that?
I'm not sure. I just, I recognize the company, but I don't know that I, I didn't sign the contract, so...
Let me look at the details of that invoice. It's used by our Special Ed Department. Kelly? Okay. But I've got to look at the detail invoice here real quick. What's that?
I'll take care of it later.
Okay. That was, that payment was made through additional grant through the COVID. What's that?
It's the PaySlab. It's because of the different days. It's the PaySlab. We ordered for Peter High School as well as JF for their skills programs. It helps them with vocational skills, and we did do that through the YR food lines for them to practice vocational skills because they didn't go out with COVID in those cases. So there are programs for our students in special education.
Thank you. Like I said, for some reason, they just stuck out with me. Some of these that are reoccurring monthly payments, I'm assuming, especially like with that KLK, where I know, like I said, I know this is the third five-thousand-dollar. Would we possibly get a discount if we made one payment, or do we have to make five-thousand-dollar payments? I know...
I believe for that one, it's ongoing services as rendered, so you wait for the services to be rendered before you would make payment. I'm looking up the vendor. I'm showing two payments. There might have been another bill list. I'll have to check on that, but I'm looking at our accounting system and pulling up the vendor and the history of it. I'm showing two payments, one for fifty-four and one for fifty-two hundred.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
And I can pull up any of these invoices online with our system. They're digitized.
Okay, I may call you.
That, so I hope I answered those questions and the rest of the staff. Sorry for the delay.
That's fine. No, appreciate you taking the time to look it up.
Okay, thank you.
What you said, did you say part of that was for strategic planning?
Yes, the consultant for the strategic plan was the KLK Education Services, is what Dr. Woodford told us.
Why did we need someone to help us with strategic planning? We have such competent people. That was your specialty coming from...
Yeah, I asked for her services throughout the school year. She assisted me with my entry plan, with my post-reflection report, and with the strategic planning. So she was a thought partner with our strategic team throughout the entire school year. The contract, I had to look it up, was for ten thousand dollars. We made two payments to her.
What services did she bring to us for ten thousand dollars?
She facilitated several meetings with us. She was present in the county on a number of occasions, and she was in constant communication with me and the central leadership team and our strategic thinking.
Just, I'm just a little surprised that we need to pay ten thousand dollars for someone to help us figure out a strategic plan. We have really, really competent people. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
That's fine. And I have one more question, if you will indulge me, please. Are we coming up, what kind of progress are we making with being able to track homeschool children, why they're going to homeschool? We said something about that and following up with the private, the children leaving us going to private school. Are we making any progress on getting that done?
We do track all homeschool notifications and keep those in the database, so we understand which families are electing to do that, and then we remove them from the list as they, you know, if they elect to return.
Are we tracking the reasons why, and then especially the ones, because I know we talked about this earlier on, correct? And I was just wondering the progress of how we're getting along with this.
Well, we have, we do have that database. We keep their reason. We differentiate which ones are religious exemptions and which ones are, you know, for other reasons.
Are we able to track the ones that are leaving us, say, for private schools well? Have we progressed to that level yet?
We, we, yes, we understand when students withdraw from school. Our secretary's in the school's code if they are going to, you know, a private school, and so we do know those numbers as, you know, whenever we query that or tally that.
Yes. Can we ask for a database to be created for that, for anyone who is leaving?
I was thinking that we did, and kind of like an exit interview process, to see if we could figure out.
Documents, so to speak.
Yeah, and that's what I was wondering, if we were moving on with that, or if we're still using, if we've progressed any, if we're still using the same methods.
I have not been part of developing any other method. We do track those numbers, and we have those reasons, you know, both in the homeschool database request and in the withdrawals for, for private schools, or for any other withdrawal, for that matter.
Yes, ma'am. So if I asked you tomorrow how many kids were homeschooled and what their reasons were, you could produce a document for me? Or would you have to go into Power School and figure all that out?
Power School would have those reports, and we can run them, sure.
So is the answer to my question yes? I would be able to say, could you send us the document with whoever is homeschooled and their reasons for doing so? That's what we asked for, like last year, just to start this year, that we would have that document. But I'm thinking your answer is no.
I can run reports from Power School, and I can run them from our homeschool database. If there's a more intricate process, we'll, and that's the board's direction to create.
I remember, and correct me if I'm wrong, I remember at some point in time, and y'all feel free to jump in and correct me, too, we discussed on a way of, almost like an exit interview with the kids, so we can track and see what's going on, so we can see what we need to do as a division to bring them back.
And we also asked that that was going to be reported to us.
You guys have an action item that hasn't been fulfilled, so when can we expect reports showing us that data?
I'll work with the staff this coming week to see what information we have available, and we'll put a memo out to the board.
Okay, and see what we can do to, to create a good tracking system, so we can see what we can do. Okay. Thank you all for indulging me, I appreciate that. Okay, we have a motion, and a first and a second motion to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Agenda approved. Item Nine, we're going to pick back up from the five o'clock, which was basically everything, except for the closed session. So let's move on to Item 3.01. When we decided that we were going to go, we were going to go on the road, we set several places, and this is the last one of the locations that we had preset. So we need to figure out, we need to figure out where we're going next month. Do we want to, I had spoken to Dr. Bergen about this, and somewhere along the lines, I believe that there will be more difficulty now that we have the high school set up, but it'd be difficulty to set up the middle schools, or could we use the middle schools?
Well, in conversation with Facilities Committee and under the action of the board, we're going to install new cameras, soundboards, so that, you know, we can, we can do board meetings in our three high schools and limit the amount of setup time it's currently taking for our technology staff to come in and bring all of this equipment in. Plus, it'll be to the benefit of the students and the staff and the administration and the community and the schools on the days we're not conducting board meetings in these auditoriums. But we don't have that same setup in the other eighteen schools. I mean, we can, but we, we have focused on making sure that the three high school auditoriums could be prepared. I was talking to our tech staff today. They spent the better part of three hours to prepare for this meeting yesterday, to get these tables set, to do all this cabling, to get these microphones in place. When we have cameras that are stationary and positioned in the school, we hope that that setup time will be lesser. But what we have attached to this agenda item is a proposed meeting location for your consideration, sticking with the high schools. We asked the administration at each of the high schools what their planned use of their auditoriums was between July and December, and then just created a rotation where the board could continue to conduct its meetings in the three high, in the four schools, the three Conference of High Schools, and in Susie Gibson. And you'll notice that Liberty is missing from this list, not that we wouldn't love to have included Liberty and been back here, but each month that the board has a scheduled board meeting, there was a conflict with the use of this space. That would have, you know, impeded the work of the many programs that occur here in the high school.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
Um...
I know that we've had numerous of conversations regarding us having our meetings at the various high schools. And certainly the facility committee and Mr. Hobook isn't here with us tonight. But we all agreed that certainly we needed to continue that pattern and allowing our meetings to be held at the various high schools. I would also like the board to consider in their, in our rotation. I'm totally in favor of us continuing at the high schools. I think certainly it's our community members coming out. They have demonstrated that going to them is very important. And so I'd like to see us do that. But I also think that it's important for us to put in our rotation and consider the school board office conference room. That, that area where we certainly have held meetings in. A lot of renovations has taken place over the years regarding that room. And in absence of Liberty High School, perhaps maybe we could consider going back there. So that, that's my suggestion to the board is for us to at least consider doing some of the rotation to go back to the school board office conference room as well.
The whole purpose of recommending us go to different schools, and I appreciate the fact that we're adding cameras and sound to high schools. That's great. We should, we, we need to do that. That's a benefit not only to, to the high schools, to us, but also to the community. But the original request was for us as a board to visit each school. And I hear the technical team say, I spent three hours, but in every other discussion, we push technology. But yet, we don't want to spend three hours for us to be able to go into all of our schools. I mean, from a facility standpoint, okay, yeah, Georgia and Matt know what's going on in those schools. But for those of us that don't go in every single elementary school, we don't know what's going on in those schools. And it gives us an opportunity to understand the difference. We, we're always hearing about the differences of these schools. And that was the point of us meeting, for one, for us as a board, to see what each facility is, is like. But also for parents who can't or don't want to drive to Bedford to a school board meeting, if we're in Montville or Manita, for them to have the opportunity to come to a local meeting where they can be a part of what we're trying to accomplish as a board. So I, I hear the request to do it in high schools and that's fine, but I don't want to take away from the mission of us going to these different facilities to see what they are like. It's important for us to go and have that communication with the principals as we're coming in, to take those tours and walk around and understand what's going on in each of those facilities. That was my original request. But if the board says we're only going to do it at high schools, that's fine. But I, I think we're missing out on seeing the middle schools. What are the differences? What does each community have to offer? What have they been doing? Looking at what's in the buildings, look at what's hanging on the boards, look at what's in the classrooms. There's a difference. And we all need to understand what those are. Elementary schools, we hear Georgia talk about Boonsborough all the time. I know Boonsborough, but has everybody on this board been to Boonsborough and walked through the halls to see what? That's what I'm trying to make sure the board as a whole understands. So I, I think we should rotate them, you know, not every month for the technical team to have to go set up. If we want to do the high schools once, everything is every other month. But we talk about technology and we talk about, we send our, our students home with Chromebooks, technology. I mean, why, why are we not wanting to do that? Yeah, it's three hours. I get it. But it's important for us to see it. It's important for our community to be able to come to us. I won't repeat, but I, I think it's very important for us to be in and out of each facility so the board understands what's going on.
I don't think that the facility committee members, that we were trying to exclude the elementary schools. Because I do agree with you that it is very valuable for us to see each of the schools. And each board member certainly has that, that right and that opportunity, should they choose to, to go and visit these various schools. The high schools, of course, are, I feel, a large percentage of the community view them as the hub or the key to that, that community. And so having our, our meetings at the various high schools where we have said we want to invest in a good sound system, certainly to me just makes it, I feel, more feasible. I'm not opposed to the, visiting the elementary schools. I just have concerns about what that P A system would be like for those, the various schools, particularly some of our smaller schools. You know, I, I'm not quite sure if they are up to par to be able to do that. But we have focused on the P A systems for our high schools. We've heard what our tech team, what they have shared with us. We want to make things feasible for them and easy for them to be able to set up for the meetings. And so it was the committee's consensus that we felt that having the meetings at the high school would be the best for now, the best route to go.
I just like to ask the technical crew, it, it took you three hours here. Is that a standard time or is it just because you've been here before? So you kind of knew what to do and it only took you three hours? Would, would that also apply to our elementary schools or is that like starting from scratch again? So in, in a lot of our elementary schools, you're talking about a meeting in the cafeteria because there just is no other place. It would be the cafeteria or the gymnasium. You know, it could be the library, but I'm not sure how we'd set up a lot, you know, that would take a lot of setting up and tearing down and rearranging of the libraries. They're, they're not really that user friendly to a meeting such as this. So, you know, just your, your best educational guess, do you, do you believe that our elementary schools in those places, that would be a cafeteria or a gymnasium, would have the power necessary to do what we need to do here reasonably? It might be better for, for us to allow the technical team to visit the schools and, and get an idea of what they could possibly do. Because I'm, I'm glad that you are getting better at this and it's, it's come down from a whole day to three or four hours for someplace like this. But I remain concerned about the fact that as we do this, if it's a day, we're pulling them away from the very people that they need to be helping, which is our students and staff. But then secondarily, it would also be the power issue. So I think we need some more information before we, some of the, the schools will probably be fine. Others may not.
I mean, maybe we could set next month and then give them time to assess that and see what works. And maybe we can add more of those schools to the rotation.
That was actually going to be my suggestion, Mr. Bergen. Because we, we've jumped from talking about high schools to elementary schools and we've never talked about them, we didn't throw the middle schools in the mix either. I know Liberty Middle School's got a nice place. Forest Middle School's got a nice place. So what, what are y'all's thoughts about, okay, July 14, Jefferson Forest has already been cleared. Start back over, go back to Jefferson Forest High School, have this reworked, coming back next month, letting us know the feasibility of possibly doing elementary schools and working the middle schools in, in this rotation.
So I'll say two things. Yes, we do work for the will of the board and we'll meet wherever you'd like to. It would not be my recommendation to go to the elementary schools. There isn't an auditorium. We're talking about setting up all the chairs and taking all the chairs down on a Thursday when the children are in that building. So we're going to stress out our custodial staff and our central maintenance staff. They're going to come and have to set a room after dismissal to be prepared for a meeting, to then break the room down. Now, we can do it and we will do it. But, you know, I, I'll echo Mr. Hill's comments of it's important that the board members be in schools and see the differences between the schools. Conducting meetings in schools is not necessarily seeing the schools and walking the building. I would welcome the board to visit all 21 schools as regularly as your time allows and I can facilitate that. I've offered many times throughout this school year and I will continue to offer again for the board to walk with me and walk our schools and see them for yourselves. We don't have to conduct a meeting to do that. That would be my recommendation that we, the middle schools do have some pullout stadium seating. So it would be very easy. I, I know at Liberty, they have the bleachers that come out in that one large room. And the sound, the, there's probably a syst, I don't know, there's a soundboard in the middle school for us to tie into though, is there, guys? Like there's a soundboard, there's a soundboard in each of the high schools that we can tie into for all of these microphones. We bring all this cabling in and then we tie into a sound system where it's built in. I don't know that we have that in our middle schools. But I can make an assessment for the board if you'd like to see where that's going to be feasible. And then we could come back and we can have further discussion about it.
I, I would like to have, figure out what we can do with the middle, middle schools. Do you think that they would be feasible to do easier than the elementary schools?
So we don't have P T A meetings at elementary schools?
We do.
Do?
Yes, we do, but in the cafeteria, in the library.
We have P T A meetings at the elementary school.
But it's spacing.
Yeah, let, let's go, in my opinion, and see what everybody thinks of the school of Forest next week or next month. Come back with us, to us, to how we can work our middle schools in and we'll go from there. We'll talk about it further. And with the feasibility, figure out, like here, we have Susie Gibson twice. See if we can take Susie Gibson off once, put Liberty Middle School in, Stanton River High School twice, take that off once, work in Forest Middle School. And then at that point, have a feasibility of being able to go into the elementary schools.
I would add one more thing to that, Madam Chairman. I, I think when we do the feasibility for the elementary school, I think one thing that's going to be a challenge for y'all is that the kids don't get, don't leave. Your, your final child isn't pulling out till about a quarter till three, plus then you, you can have after school programs that utilize these spaces. So would you, in fact, I think you need to consider when you're doing it, would you, speaking to the principal, would you have the time you need? Like at Stewardsville, you wouldn't because everything's coming through that gym area to the front door. So you would not be able to work in there until that last child left. And, and, you know, we could maybe vent children to some other rooms, but that would be a quarter till three before you had access to that space. And would you be able to do it? So consider that when you're, you know, checking on feasibility, not just power, but time for you to do what you need to do.
But does that, does that sound feasible to everybody? Go, go to Forest next month? And then get a new schedule, possibly some middle schools worked in there for now, and then figure out which elementary schools we could go to if possible. But at least get the middle schools in this rotation, all three of the middle schools in this rotation.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. We certainly can do an assessment of all the schools and let you know where it's going to be feasible to stream the meeting, set up this, this dais for all of you with cabling and microphones. Happy to do so.
Sounds great. So next month, I'll see, we'll see everybody at Jefferson Forest High School Auditorium. Item 3.02 mitigation strategies. Dr. Bergen, do, what are our current mitigation strategies? I know when we voted to eliminate masks, we voted to keep the mitigation strategies in place, but are we still having to enforce those?
Well, school, school year's out. And as we prepare for next school year, as I've shared with the board leadership, unless directed by state or federal law or this school board, I will not have a mitigation plan for next school year. For the last several years, we've had a very detailed mitigation plan that required physical distancing, limitation on numbers of peoples in rooms, masking, health and wellness checks. The current state code that required us to submit a plan, I checked online, it times out August 1st of 2022. So unless it's reauthorized or there is some other state or federal action taken, then we won't be required to submit a mitigation plan. And I have no intent of creating one unless the board hits the will of the board that I do create one.
So with the elimination of the mitigation strategies, then will the kids be allowed to take field trips next year?
Yes.
Have assemblies, have pep rallies?
Yes.
Are you allowed to eat with our kids?
We, the cafeterias are being, were being used this year anyway. We started the school year out where they were not. And many schools were able to go full back without much trouble at all. Other schools, for various reasons, needed to phase back. But by the end of the school year, all the cafeterias were being used by the students.
So what I'm hearing you say is 2022, 2023 school year will be back to pre-COVID conditions?
It's my intent, unless this board wants to direct otherwise or we're, we need to respond to state or federal legislation that would require something else.
Any other questions? Staff reports, Dr. Woodford, 4.01, end of year academic reporting.
Good evening, members of the board. As you know, the past two years have been very difficult for our students, teachers and staff. However, I am proud that Bedford County Public Schools had an innovative return to school plan in the fall of 2020 that kept our students in grades K through six in school every day and our students in grades seven through 12 in school at least two and possibly even three days a week, when many others were 100% virtual. And I think over the next few months, as we begin to share some of our data, you're going to see the fruits of that hard work that our teachers and students did. At this point, we only have a few finalized test data points that we can fully report. Most of the completed data that I'm going to share with you tonight is from the elementary level. While we look at many indicators throughout the year and teachers monitor their class data closely, we wanted to be sure that what we shared was comparable throughout the division and provided some overall generalizations regarding student performance. We will continue to receive data regarding S O L scores, C T E and workplace readiness skills, A P scores and alternative S O L test scores for our students with disabilities throughout the summer. As summer school begins soon, students will be retaking some courses or attending summer school and maybe retaking S O L tests for some updated scores. So once we have that complete and accurate picture of that data, Mr. Blankenship will share that with the board. I would like to share tonight just a few data points. And first, I'd like to share data from our phonological literacy screening test. Or as many people call it, our teachers know it as PALS or PALS Plus. These scores are for kindergarten through fifth grade. This is a screening tool that identifies areas of strength and weaknesses on multiple age appropriate reading skills and is a strong indicator of reading success. This screening is required for all students in Virginia schools and is meant to screen students for skill deficits at their grade level. When looking at the percentages, think about these as benchmarks of students meeting the current expected reading skills and not necessarily passing scores. So what we are looking at when we're using a screening tool, we're really looking to see which students are at level in reading and then which students need tier two and tier three interventions in reading. In this first set of data, we're looking at PALS kindergarten through third grade scores and specifically the percentage of students meeting the benchmark for the test at different time periods. In all four grade levels, kindergarten through third, we saw increases in the percentages In all four grade levels, kindergarten through 3rd, we saw increases in the percentages of students meeting the benchmark from the fall to the spring. You will notice that some of them have rather significant gains, some have smaller gains. One thing that I would like to point out is that the benchmarks also change. So, a beginning kindergarten benchmark, they're looking to screen where students are at the start of skills for kindergarten, and then the benchmark rises as they get to the end of kindergarten. So, as the year goes on, the benchmark also rises. We also are looking, as an instructional team, at PALS data for students from the spring of 2021 to the spring of 2022. And so, I've marked that here. You'll see that our kindergarteners in the spring of '21, which is highlighted in green, had a 78% meeting benchmark rate. And as they move to 1st grade this school year, we see that their spring 2020 score has slightly dropped by about two percentage points. Again, that helps us, looking at cohort data, to say, are there skills that possibly we need to go back and teach students? Are they meeting some overall, missing some overall reading skills? Or it is a different test? So, you know, as they progress on to 2nd and 3rd, we'll continue to watch those scores. Our cohort groups in 1st, 2nd, and 3rd grade all show increases between 4% and 6%. And so, based on the fact that, you know, it's been a very difficult year with quarantines and isolation and kids in and out, we feel really good about our scores. And actually, I appreciate Mr. Daniels asking me some questions today that pushed me to look a little bit closer at some data. Compared to Virginia spring scores, 3rd graders in Virginia only met the benchmark at 50%. So, our 3rd graders are doing much better than at the state average. 2nd graders across Virginia are at 65%. Our students are much higher than that. 1st grade at 69% and kindergarteners at 78%. So, if we are comparing our students to students across Virginia, we are doing very, very well. And so, I'm really happy with what our teachers and students have been able to do. Our PALS Plus 4th and 5th grade data is also noted in this chart. Looking specifically, again, if we look at our fall '21 scores over to the spring '22 scores, we did see a slight decrease in 4th grade, but an increase in 5th grade. And again, those are looking at very specific skills for comprehension. I will say that just in speaking to principals and our instruction team, even though we don't have final data, we feel that our SOL reading scores are going to reflect some really good work at the school level. So, I'm excited to see what those final numbers are and for us as a team to be able to share that with you. Again, just looking at some cohort data, when we look at our 3rd graders last year in the spring to their scores this spring in 4th grade, we see improvements there, 78% to 82%. And the same for our cohort of 4th grade students to our 5th graders this spring. So, our PALS data, we feel, is very good. We also have VKRP, which is an assessment, it's called the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program. This is another state-required assessment screening for math and social skills for kindergarten only. You'll see that I'm sharing specifically the math skills because that is a very specific test. The social skills are checklist that teachers prepare. So, that's a little bit harder data to kind of put together. It really is individualized to the student. So, when we're looking at our math data, overall math performance of our kindergarten students from fall to spring had just a slight increase. But I want you to note that we do have some significant gains in the subcategories of geometry and patterning, while there are areas of focus next year with numeracy and computation skills. And Dr. Trossper and Mrs. Bowyer are already looking at supports for our primary teachers on those two particular areas for math skills. Those are typically the areas that students struggle with a little bit more in math, but Dr. Trossper's team has already looked at some lesson plans, some training, some professional development. We do have IXL data, which is math data too for our 1st and 2nd graders. This is a division assessment used by all of our schools because we wanted to be able to have some type of math assessment that we were all using. This assessment is not only used to screen students three times a year on grade-level skills, but it also provides some interactive online practice and remedial support for students. It is one of our most-used digital tools in math by our teachers. Overall, for the division, we can see a very small increase in on-grade level performance with the most variance in 1st grade. Again, Mrs. Bowyer is keeping this in mind as she builds supports for teachers of the primary grades in math in the areas of numeracy and computation. I did just want to say, this is not a state assessment, so there is, I can't compare it to other scores for students in the state of Virginia. It's just one that we had asked our teachers to use. And finally, tonight, I didn't want to leave you tonight without something from the secondary level. I do want to say, as we wait on our finalized SOL scores, we are going to be getting lots of secondary data over the next few months. We'll have final on-time graduation numbers, we'll have our number of CTE completers, we'll have our advanced placement scores, we'll have possibly some SAT scores for students who took that. So, a lot of our secondary data is going to be coming over the next few months. But I do want to say, we are really proud of our 680 graduates that we celebrated on May the 28th at the Vine Center. We did have six students that schools are still continuing to work with to complete some of their graduation requirements, and we hope that they're mostly going to finish those in the summer and be summer graduates in our summer school program. We're also really proud of our 19 ISAEP students. Those are Individual Student Alternative Education Plan students. Those are students who, for various reasons, who have not turned 18, have decided that instead of dropping out, they want to go ahead and get their GED before they turn 18. And so, we have 19 students who went that route and got their GED before leaving school this spring. And we also are very proud that we had three adult GED completers. And all of those programs occur at our Alternative Education Center and are supported by our teachers and school system. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. One of the questions that Mr. Hill and I were talking earlier about some of the data, and he just asked me, you know, what are we kind of focused on? What programs are we looking at? And I did ask Dr. Trossper if he'd just be able to come up and just share some of what his team is already thinking about for next year, some of the work they're already doing. So, if he wants to come up, and then he and I both can answer any questions.
Good evening. So, while we're still waiting on official SOL data, and we have already started analyzing it internally, looking at preliminary data and developing action plans over the summer for how we can support schools. And so, the first area I would point you to is the strategic framework and some of the work we're doing with that team. We've just, we are going to put together a numeracy and a literacy team, and we're going to look at best practices in both subject areas. We're specifically looking at the science of reading that's going to be required by the Virginia Literacy Act two years down the road, but we want to get started early by looking at that data with our reading specialists. We're going to have a division literacy and a numeracy plan, which we will implement and communicate with our teachers over the next few months as they return back to school. Of course, a big part of our plan is the adoption of the resources for ELA. And so, our secondary schools will be adopting that curriculum, and our expectation is going to be faithful to that curriculum consistency, fidelity. So, that way, we can really have a common data set that we can recognize and decide what those action plans would be. And we're going to continue to work with our elementary schools. As you know, that's, that's been challenging, adopting that curriculum, but we'll continue to implement those, those good strategies from the science of reading. We're talking to our principals about using data. We spend a lot of time collecting data, but how are you using it to really inform your instructional practices in the classroom? And so, that work actually begins next week at the admin conference, which we're looking forward to. And then, of course, with our pre-K programs, we've expanded access. We're actually adopting a curriculum for the pre-K also that's, we're excited about. We think that's going to really benefit our students. And then, just a few other examples, we already have division pacing guides. Those pacing guides, we've gotten feedback from teachers. We've looked at our data, and we're going to make sure we're spending the appropriate amount of time on the areas where students are showing that they need additional time and assistance. We have an assessment calendar, so we have common data sets that we can look at regularly and, again, adjust to make sure we're supporting schools as needed. We'll be meeting with our principals to make sure that we're supporting them and just to seeing how we can, we can work with them to improve their, their scores in any way they need. And then, finally, as part of the school improvement process, the DOE does, has academic reviews. And so, as schools do start to show weaknesses on their school quality profile, we are, have already attended some trainings. We will continue to go to those trainings. And essentially, we will go into schools and take a very specific targeted look at them and see how we can make recommendations and action steps to get those schools back where they need to be. So, any questions?
Yes, I do have a question regarding the PALS assessment, Dr. Woodford. As you mentioned, it certainly is a strong indicator for our students' reading success. And I'm just curious in terms of any common threads that you all found in looking at your data in regards to skill deficits?
Well, I think, as always, concept of word is, continues to be something we focus on at the kindergarten level. We have noticed deficits in explicit phonics instruction, and last year, we adopted the Hagerty-Fernemich program. And so, we spent time this year training and getting teachers familiar with it. We're going to focus on that again. That is also a big part of the science of reading and part of what we were hoping to adopt in our new K-5 curriculum, but we still have the Hagerty program, and we'll use that for explicit phonics, K, you know, K-5, until we adopt that new reading curriculum. And then, we'll still use Hagerty as a remedial tool if we need to. So, I would say those are our two biggest places, concept of word in kindergarten and then the phonics skills.
In your visits at the various schools, and Dr. Trossper, please feel free to chime in too as well, your visits at the elementary schools and discussion, things with the principals and teachers, what are you hearing from them in terms of concerns that they may have with the results here, their PALS results?
I don't, do you? Yeah, I haven't, I know that Dr. Trossper has set up times he's going to be talking to principals. Honestly, I think the biggest thing that I heard, just as far as reading in general, was that teachers were very happy that they were able to have a little bit more flexibility in moving in reading groups again. That first year of the pandemic, we were in cohort groups, and so, teachers were unable to move students flexibly. And so, that's all, you know, was really resolved, really this year, but really in the spring. And so, I think our teachers feel much more comfortable they can group students the way they need to and get back to just really good reading instruction. So, I think they, honestly, they felt really good about scores and the fact that they, they were very thankful they had their kids these two years face-to-face, five days a week. So, I think they're feeling pretty good. I'm not sure that they see anything different than what patterns they've seen over the years. So, I think we are...
I was just thinking with COVID and some of the loss of learning, that unfortunately, our children have had to face. I was just curious as to what you all have heard from teachers and principals regarding some of those specific skill losses?
Yeah, I think our K-6, from just my conversations with principals, they, they feel fairly good. I think they're more concerned about some of the, maybe some more issues with students being able to self-regulate, being in school longer, working with some of our preschoolers who, and early kindergartners who've not been in daycare or preschool facilities. And so, they're coming to kindergarten not really with some of those skills that sometimes we see kids who've been in preschool are, which is, we are very excited that our VPI local, well, I'm sorry, state funding was increased, so we can add two, three-year-old VPI programs next year. So, we're hoping maybe we can get them earlier and catch up on some of that. So, yeah, I can get you some more specifics, but that's just in general what I've heard talking to principals.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Either Dr. Trossper or Dr. Woodford? Mr. Daniels?
Couple more. With the PALS data, are we able to get that, when we get more, more of the information, more finalized, are we able to get that broken down by school?
Yes, we have it broken down by school. And we keep that, and I'm happy, I can send that out in a Wednesday memo if you guys are interested, if all of you would like to see school-specific data. That's...
And then, internally, you know, do we set goals for the year, you know, prior to getting the results and saying, we want to be at 90%? Like, is there, do you guys set internal goals for where we want to get to? So, we're always trying to pull people up higher?
Well, every school has a comprehensive school improvement plan, and so, as part of that process, we do require goal-setting, and then they meet with their leadership teams. Sometimes over the summer, very early in the year, that's, that is due to the division in October, and they develop strategies that are school-specific. And so, one of the things we're going to be talking to our schools about as we implement the strategic framework is how can they align those goals with our goal? And, you know, the first goal is high, high expectations and high achievement. So, to answer your question, yes, we certainly have goals with the instruction team, but every school will look at their data and set goals based on where they are and what the data shows they need to try to achieve throughout the year.
Okay.
And just one more thing I'd add is, obviously, we have the state goals as well, so there are benchmarks that we have to meet at the state level. And so, that is...
Thank you.
Obviously, our baseline, and we want to go push beyond those in many cases, but...
Blow them out of the water. That'd be great.
That's right.
Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Moving on to 5.01, policy updates. Dr. Bergen?
Yes, ma'am. So, we have, we're on 5.01. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. On this item, we have six policies and two regulations up for review, which have already been vetted by the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. The full information is available to the board members and the public through the link that is available on the agenda. This time, we would ask if you have any questions. There's staff in the room that could answer any questions you may have about these six policies and two regulations, as well as the members of the committee who were there for, for the review.
Questions?
Just have one for the committee. The small purchasing, what was the thought behind making small purchasing? I was looking at DR, DJR, the regulation language added to include a responsibility, the Budget and Finance or Facilities Committee to review of informal and formal bids for the purchase of goods and services over $100,000. Why are we going that high? I'm just wondering.
Going that high, meaning you think it should be lower, like $50,000?
Yeah.
That it needs to come to the, to the committees? Yeah, well, I think it was at $200,000, and so, we split it in half to see what would actually come to you guys for approval. If the board, you know, once we get into that and you start reviewing and you don't see an increase of those coming to, to both of the committees, then we can certainly reduce it. But there's going to be items that are at that $100,000 that I don't think we want coming to us every single time if we've already approved that budget. But we felt like over $100,000, we want to take a look at it, so.
Chris, did you have anything additions?
No, you nailed it.
Okay.
Further questions?
Okay, so, these will be on the agenda next month for approval, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to 5.02, resolution for tax credits. Dr. Duss, please.
Thank you. Our staff and the Facilities Committee have reviewed the attached resolution that would allow staff to take the necessary legal steps to apply for Virginia historic tax credits. These credits, as we have discussed in previous meetings, are, can be a considerable funding source in buildings, in qualifying buildings, including the... funding source in buildings, in qualifying buildings, including the former Bedford Training School building, which houses many school districts' functions, which is currently being worked on. So, this, we ask for you to consider that, this resolution this month and approve it next month so that we can move forward with all the necessary legal steps to enter into a corporation, work with an investor, you know, qualify for those tax credits the way the state runs that program. I'd be happy to answer any questions now or follow up with those if I can't answer them now.
Any questions for Dr. Dewis?
Go ahead and then I'll follow you.
Actually, I have several. I don't, I really don't mean to be putting you on the hot seat. I really don't.
I'll do my best.
Why is this done by a resolution? Is it required, because I actually pulled the code, 58.1-339.2 for historic rehabilitation tax and does not say it has to pass through us by a resolution. So, why is this going through a resolution?
This is at the advice of the attorney we're working with, who has done lots of these projects. It's a formal way to get the board's authorization to enter into a limited liability corporation, which actually would take ownership of that building for, you know, the duration of the project and then therefore be able to apply and qualify for those tax credits. It's at that attorney's advice that we're doing this.
What attorney? Is that the Woods Rogers that prepared the operating agreement?
Yes.
And you will be the sole managing member of the corporation? It had you listed as being the sole managing member of the LLC. Is that correct?
In the operating agreement, is that what you're-
Yes, sir.
-referring to? That's the way he drafted it, to have a representative of the school district. Because the school district, even though this is a separate entity, the school district retains 99.9% control of it. So, that .01 is the way to get the investor involved.
Well, and I understand, I understand all this. But I would think, one, I'm going to be straight up. I'm not comfortable taking the deed, taking possession of the property out into an LLC. Are we absolutely required by this to do, to get, take advantage of the tax credits? Or can we leave it, why can't we leave it in our name? Do you know, is that something we need to consult with an attorney about to get further explanation?
Well, I've had lengthy consultations with the attorney on the process and this is his direction. The investors' money, who, this is the way the state process works. An entity like a school board or a county government can't do that alone. And so, you know, in order to have that partnership with the outside investor who needs to take part in the process, this is, this is the process that, you know, the town has used and other entities have used when they apply and successfully get these tax credits.
Well, and I noticed, reading the operating agreement, that it said specifically that the certificate of organization has already been issued, but it has not. I checked on the SEC website today. When will that, I mean, do they need our approval before they go ahead and form this LLC?
He has done some preliminary work with those state organizations on some of the documentation. But yes, your approval is, you know, is needed to move forward with this.
Then, I'm reading in here that this is going to be good through June of next year, 2023. Is that correct?
I think that was listed as an outside date to make sure that all, any lingering last bills to the contractor have been resolved and paid. I don't, we are certainly hoping that this is wrapped up well before then. That's the plan. But I think that's why that's listed that way.
Then is it the intent, then at that date, that this LLC will dissolve and this property will be deeded back into our name?
Absolutely. No.
Then I noticed also on this deed that there is, and I'm assuming, well, you know what they say about assuming, but it's coming from the school board, which would exempt us from grantor's tax. But there is no exemption for taxes on here. And if we are going to be the main people on BTS restoration LLC, there needs to be an exemption code on here so we're not paying recordation taxes. Because if we, if you have to base that on the amount of money you're going to save from this, you're talking about thousands of dollars of recordation taxes potentially.
I can certainly follow up with the attorney on that.
Okay. And if, if we have to take it into this LLC, which again, I'm not fond of, I would think as a fail-safe, and I'm not saying anything about you, I'm thinking protection-wise, I think we need to designate two managing members, both of whom must act, not either one of whom, but both of you must act together. That way, you're witnessing for each other. Does that sound?
I can certainly ask the attorney about that. And if there are any reasons not to do that, I'll let you know.
Okay. Any more questions?
Mrs. Kirby?
Yes.
You have a lot of expertise in this area, in your-
Can, I'm sorry, I-
No, it's quite all right. And if you would like, we can arrange for you and staff to meet with the attorney and go through this document to answer these very specific questions. So, representing the board, I think your other board members would be fine with that.
Would y'all have, do y'all have any problem with that?
I would definitely feel more comfortable with you.
Great.
That's a great idea.
Okay, can we call me and we'll figure out something?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for suggesting that, Dr. Bergen.
You're welcome, Mrs. Kirby.
Lost my place. I got distracted. Okay. So, now we get to come back down to action items. Item 10.01, resolution in support of parental rights. Do we want to do another reading of the resolution? No? We're good? Do I have a motion regarding the resolution of parental rights? Have a motion by Mr. Hill. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Hairston. Any discussion?
Madam Chairman, I just have one question. The eighth item down there says, whereas the Bedford County School Board believes that any parent has the right to see and evaluate all surveys, data collection, and psychological profile before they are administered to Bedford County's students, isn't it more appropriate to say their student? I mean, I wouldn't want you looking at my child's, whatever's being given to my child's, you know.
The way I read it, they have the opportunity to pull the data to make a decision for their student.
Right.
But before it's rolled out to Bedford County students.
I don't read it that way, but if that's how you intended it, okay. That was my only question.
Any more questions?
Uh-uh.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a motion on the floor with a second. No further discussion. Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Resolution passes. 10.02, resolution in support of teachers and staff. Dr. Mealy, did you want to do a final reading or just?
Unless anybody wants a final reading.
Okay, do I have a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Have a motion by Dr. Mealy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hairston. Any discussion?
Yes, I do have some discussion. I wanted to just talk a bit about our meeting last month because Tim Griffith spoke to us last month. And I'd like to just go over a little bit of what he said. Because when I reflected on what he said, I came to agree with him. He spoke really good words and words that made sense to me. So, what I'm going to share are some direct quotes from his public comment time during the May 12 meeting. And they're not necessarily totally in order. But when he came to the podium, he introduced himself. He said, "I'm Tim Griffith and I get to serve on the Bedford County, to serve Bedford County as the GOP unit chair for the Republican Party here." Then he went on to discuss during his time to say, and I quote, "I want to talk to you, with you tonight about the resolution coming before you," end of quote. He then spoke a little more and he said, quote, "I was looking over this resolution and all the great things that are in there," end quote. And then he went on to explain that many, including himself, are concerned that radical ideology is being brought into the classrooms all over the country and that there are teachers trying to groom children. So, he said, and I quote, "If you want to make sure that this is not happening in Bedford County and make sure they're notified before it does happen," he was referring to the parents, "then I would ask you to vote for this resolution," end quote. "But here's the part that I thought was most sensible upon reflection. And I thought it made sense for all of us to consider." He said, and I quote, "If you believe that it doesn't happen in Bedford County and it's not really a concern in Bedford County, I want to ask you to still vote for it because people like me are worried that it is. And I think it would put a lot of our minds at rest to make this public statement, put it in writing that we stand by our parents." And I just want to think about that a minute. "I think it would put a lot of our minds at rest to make this public statement. So, when you're looking at the teacher and staff resolution, I would ask my colleagues to apply the same sensible train of thought to this resolution. Some of our teachers and staff are worried, just like our parents are worried. Passing this resolution, I believe, would put their minds at rest to make a public statement, put it in writing as Tim suggested. We, as the board, would reaffirm our commitment to teachers and staff that we stand by our teachers and staff, just as we stand by our parents." These were good and sensible words that made sense to me for all stakeholders in Bedford County. Another thing I thought about was most, many or many parts of the parent resolution is already in the Code of Virginia or been established through executive order. I tried to find some similar things for teachers and staff. Now, I'm not an attorney. I did not perform an exhaustive search, but I couldn't find anything about teachers and staff in this regard, the rights. So, if we believe that it's necessary to construct a resolution for parents, even though their rights are guaranteed within the Code of Virginia, is it also not reasonable and sensible to provide our teachers and staff with the same support because they have nothing to fall back on in the Code of Virginia? So, I just want to ask my colleagues to reflect on Tim Griffith's words because they were good words and they made sense for all of us. Ms. Hairston reminded us last month that we were a team and to provide the quality of education necessary for our children to be successful and compete within the global community of the 21st century, we needed to work as a team. The teacher and staff resolution will put a lot of our staff members' minds at ease, resting, knowing that the teachers and staff are important enough to the board to construct a resolution to publicly acknowledge that we stand by our teachers and staff. Thank you, Tim Griffith, for giving us those good words to consider. And thank you, Mr. Sneed, tonight, for your words about teachers, specifically that teachers sure could use some help. This resolution could be the start. It's not, let's not squander this opportunity, but listen to Mr. Griffith to publicly state our support and put it in writing so that the minds of our teachers and staff can also rest.
Okay, I have a motion and a first, a first and a second. Call for a vote. All those in favor of the teacher-staff resolution signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Ms. Johnson, will you poll the board, please?
Daniels?
Aye.
Mrs. Hairston?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
No.
Kirby?
Yes.
Dr. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Nils? You have a tie vote, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And actually, I had, I had this handy. It's Code of Virginia. Normally, if it's a tie vote, it's dead in the water.
Right.
It doesn't pass.
Right.
But according to Virginia Code, section 2.22.1-75, "In any case in which there is a tie vote of the school board of any school division, when all members are not present, the question shall be passed until the next meeting, when it shall again be voted upon, even though all members were not present." So, we will put it back on the agenda for next month. Okay, item 10.03, resolution regarding workers' compensation for school board members. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Hill. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Hairston. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Approval for the Code of Student Conduct. Do I have a motion?
So moved that we approved the Code of Student Conduct as presented.
I have a motion by Dr. Mealy. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Nils. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10.05, do I have a motion for the approval of title grants?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the title grants.
I have a motion by Ms. Hairston. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was kind of a tie, so I'm going to give it to Mr. Hill. Second to Mr. Hill. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. 10.06, approval of superintendent designees for the 22-23 school year. Do I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the superintendent's designees for 2022-23.
Have a motion by Ms. Hairston. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Daniels. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 10.07, do I have a motion for the approval of policy updates presented at the May 12 board meeting?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Hill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hairston. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Approval carries. Item 10.08, the strategic plan. Do I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the strategic plan.
I have a motion by Ms. Hairston. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Mealy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Wow. Let's move on to item 11, superintendent's report. Dr. Bergen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As has been our custom, we have lots to celebrate with accomplishments of students and staff since we were last together. We'll begin with the gentleman on the screen, Wade Wickline. The 2022 Central Virginia Welding Wars competition was recently held at Central Virginia Community College. This competition included 40 individuals competing in a long day of hands-on welding tasks. 10 individuals were selected by the judges as the top welders for their respective categories. And we offer up our congratulations to Wade Wickline from Stanton River High School for placing third in Level 2 welding competition. Over this past school year, Forest Middle School had three teams that were participating in a very unique challenge called Plant the Moon Challenge. There were a total of 248 teams in this competition that represented not only the United States, but 10 countries, with students ranging from elementary through college. The Forest Middle School students worked in teams, five days a week, for 10 weeks to grow green beans, lettuce, and kale that had been planted in moon regolith, which is essentially lunar dust, along with some varying amounts of soil additives. The teams then presented their work virtually to representatives from Nassau and the Virginia Department of Education. And while all three teams were certainly amazing in their accomplishments, the Best in Show Award for plant growth was awarded to the Green Bean Team of Forest Middle School. Congratulations to all of our Forest Middle School students and to their teachers for providing this very unique hands-on opportunity for our kids. Jefferson Forest High School's Justin Kim, a student at- a student at the Central Virginia Governor's School for Science and Technology, recently won fourth-place grand award in biomedical and health sciences at the Regeneron International Science and Engineering Fair. His presentation was on, the title of his presentation was, "The Effect of Busillus Sirius on the Central Nervous System of Dugisioa Tigren." Congratulations to me for getting all of those words correct, and really, congratulations to Justin Kim for his amazing work at this international science and engineering fair. Staying in the science lane, we had many students recently participate in the Central Virginia Regional Middle School Science Fair. We'd like to congratulate Forest Middle School students Avery Pisick and Olivia Dallapena, who took first place in chemistry, and will now represent, along with Sophie and Nicholas Bellinger, the region at the 2022 International Science Fair. Congratulations also to Forest Middle School student Owen Evans, who took second place in physics, and to Manita Elementary School student Anson Hager, who took second place in the Rube Goldberg Competition. We'd like to once again congratulate Katrina Grooms of New London Academy, being named Teacher of the Year. We'd also, at this time, like to take a moment to thank the businesses and the organizations throughout the county for their donations in support of Katrina and all of our Teacher of the Year nominees. The following businesses contributed their goods and services, so our thanks to Faustic Corporation, London's Salt Spa, Sam Moore Furniture, Simply Vanilla Gourmet, Virginia Furniture Market, Emerson Creek Pottery, J.M. Freebird, Manita Farm and Home Center, and the Bedford Area Educational Foundation. Mrs. Grooms has submitted her application to represent in the region. We're very hopeful that she will emerge from the 22 school divisions in Region 5 to become the region's representative for the state finalists. And if she's so chosen, it would be the seventh time in the past 13 years that Bedford County has had a regional teacher. So fingers crossed for Katrina. For those of you who are not able to attend or view our graduation ceremonies that were held on May 28 at Liberty University, as previously shared by Dr. Woodford, we're so proud to have had 680 students receive their diplomas that day. Congratulations to all of our graduates as they embark on this next adventure in life. We certainly hope they take pride in how far they've come, how, to have faith in how far they can go, and to never forget to enjoy the journey. If you've been monitoring our social media channels lately, you'll know that our students have had some awesome spring sports and other VHSL activities, a season of accomplishments. First, congratulations to all three of our high schools. They were all represented at the state track meet that was held this past Saturday at Liberty University. J.F.'s Girls Track Team was crowned the regional champs and the Group 4A state runner-up. Congratulations also to the Jefferson Forest teams, who recently competed in the VHSL Film Festival Competition, with the school's animation team being selected as the audience choice for Best Feature in the state competition. J.F.'s Baseball Team has now won the region, and the Soccer Team is regional runner-up. Both teams are now pursuing a state title and play tomorrow in the state semifinals. We wish our student athletes, competing tomorrow, the best of luck. We look forward to recognizing them and all of our students for their spring sports and other VHSL activity accomplishments at the July school board meeting. And, sorry, and the last slide. This past Monday, June 6, as part of the Global Freedom Rings event, church bells all across Bedford County chimed out 20 times to honor the 20 individuals who gave their lives on the D-Day invasion of Normandy, France in 1944. So we would be remiss if we didn't take this moment to honor and say thank you to all the members of our armed services, both present and past, for their bravery and their service. The memory of those who have fought and sacrificed their lives for our freedoms will never be forgotten. Madam Chair, concludes the superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Dr. Bergen. Item 12.01, Committee Reports. Ms. Harrison, I believe we started with you last month. So, Mr. Daniels, do you have any committee reports?
We had the last CAC committee meeting of the year, which happened a couple weeks ago. It was great. There was a lot of thank yous going across to all the members and for their participation, and their, and all the efforts that they put in for the year. One of the things moving into next year that was discussed was trying to hold more events for the special needs students and their families. So that was well received, and it looks like we're going to move forward, I believe, with probably at least three more events throughout the year. So all in all, it was really good.
Perfect. Any others?
The IGA committee, that was it. Yeah.
James?
Budget Committee. We had some numbers, but they were still too fresh to update. I think we do have some worksheets now, so I don't know if Mr. Haggler wants to go over anything or give any numbers or anything, or have anything he might want to say.
I'll take that, if that's all right, Randy. If it's all right with you, not tonight, we'd like to meet with the committee. We have an email out to the two committee members. We're going to review that in detail with you. And then we have a special-called budget work session to brief the full board and the community on the developments of the budget.
Hill? Any committee reports?
Central Virginia Gov. School, we met. We looked at the budget, proposed budget for next year. We did approve that tentatively, waiting for state results. So we will not meet again until August, but we have given permission for a range of that approval for Central Virginia Gov. School. And then the IGA, which is what I think I heard from last meeting, is what we're now calling it. Reminds me of a grocery store, but we'll go with it. We went over several of the policies which were presented tonight for informational. I think the biggest one was the FMLA, and that was a big, thick packet that we had to go through. But I think we're making progress with the policies as they're being presented. I think things are speeding up as we go through, as we set that criteria for what we want it to look like. So I think we're making good progress for those.
Dr. Mealy?
Yes, I just have the same information that Mr. Hill just shared with the Renon Valley Governor's School. We are doing the same thing, but we don't meet until October. So we did give tentative consensus to approving that budget as well.
Harrison?
The Facility Committee met on May 20. And of course, a lot of things Dr. Dewis has already shared with us tonight, but I will just kind of highlight a couple of things that we did talk about and got some updates on regarding our HVAC. That work has begun in four schools. Maybe we've reached more by now, I don't know. That was at that meeting at the time, is the information I'm sharing with you. Water fountains have been installed at 20-plus schools. I think we have 40 total that will be installed, but we are moving right along with that as well. We also talked a little bit and discussed the resolution for the historic tax credit. And I'm certainly pleased that Mrs. Kirby's going to take a look and join us on that and look closer at that. So I think that's really good, that we will allow you to do that with your expertise. Also, we did discuss having community meetings regarding Stanton River High School and Liberty High School's auditorium. We really feel like it's time to begin that discussion and to get input from our community regarding their needs. And we know that these two schools have great needs. And so we do want to begin generating some discussion in our community regarding the needs, as well as funding, too. We talked a little bit about our tentative schedule for future meetings. We scheduled up until six months from now, so we've got all that squared away. I took a field trip with Mr. Blankenship, and I am so appreciative for his driving skills as he took me across some very winding roads as we were looking at some of the routes of our New London School students and our students in Otter River, as well as Forest Elementary School. We're looking at those schools and took a look at those routes because, as I've shared with you all, we have concerns about the capacity numbers, particularly at our school in New London. So we wanted, I wanted, to take a closer look as to where those lines are, and the students and families, certainly, that live along those various routes. In the future, in the near future, we are certainly going to be presenting to the board a proposed plan on how we would like to address the capacity issues that we are facing. This is a topic that must be had, along with solutions are needed. And so I look forward to having this discussion with fellow board members as we reach a plan as well. Our Laurel School Board, we haven't met since the May 4th, so we haven't had a meeting since then. But I'm excited about the expansion of the program at Laurel School and the needs that these programs will meet our students, that particular student population. So, Madam Chairman, that's all I have in terms of reports.
Well, thank you all for all those reports. Okay, let's start with, on this end now, Ms. Harrison?
Okay, I'll just keep talking.
Keep, keep going.
Just keep going.
You did such a good job, keep on going.
All right.
Comments and concerns from board members, please.
Okay. So I, too, want to extend congratulations and well wishes to all of our Bedford County Public School retirees. I went through the list and certainly know that there's a lot of familiar faces and individuals that I've worked with that have decided to retire. And so I wanted to just take a moment and just recognize those individuals, but also to extend to all of our Bedford County retirees my well wishes for you, and I know you're going to just enjoy retirement because it's pretty awesome, that's for sure. I want to recognize Martha Nolan, a reading specialist at Big Allen School. Martha and I worked together at Bedford Primary School, and she's just a phenomenal reading specialist. We're going to really miss her. And also to Claire Mooney, who is a special ed teacher at Otter River. She and I worked closely together at Otter River. And Claire, just enjoy your retirement. And also, I want to just take a moment to say to Patricia Knox, what a phenomenal lady she is, and such hard work, and her dedication to our students, our schools. Patricia was really, I feel, the individual that really helped to build our nursing program. She was a voice, and certainly a force to be reckoned with as well. But she was determined. And so Patricia, I wish you the very, very best, and I am just very happy with all of the work that you've done in establishing our nursing program. So congratulations to you. Also, I think, oh, I do, I do have a question that I wanted to ask regarding our safety, in terms of safety drills and our lockdowns and our walkthroughs that are conducted by our safety manager team. I don't know, Dr. Dewis, that may be under your umbrella there. If you could provide me with just the number of safety drills and walkthroughs that have been conducted this year, I would really appreciate that. I don't know if other fellow board members would like to know any of that information, but I do, would like very much to have that information. I think the individuals who spoke tonight, particularly the gentleman who spoke regarding the resource officers, in light of everything that's going on in our nation regarding school shootings, I certainly support the resource officers, and I think it's very important that we provide every level of safety. And I know that our school division is doing just that. I know that those individuals who are in charge are working hard, and that we've got a lot of safety measures in place already. And so I do want to commend our county for that, but I would like to just have that information, please. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Mealy?
Yes, I'm just going to follow up on what Ms. Harrison just started with because in light of Uvalde and the other mass shootings in this country, I know Mr. Simmons isn't really in charge of this. Is that correct? Yeah. And so I would like to know, you know, is he visiting our schools regularly?
Yes.
Do we have a log of his visits to show that he has done this?
Check to see how we account for his time.
Okay. Is he, in light of the shootings that have occurred, is he reviewing crisis plans with principles?
So, Mrs. Kirby, do you want to take the lead on this?
Yeah, I was actually going to hit on some of this in my comments.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
If we could follow up.
Okay. So I'll ask another, I have another couple of questions. If you're going to answer it, just, or just let me know.
Yeah, let's hold off, if we can, if we can, I'll talk.
Okay. Um, okay, because I think Glenn Smith, I believe, was the gentleman who got up and spoke. And, you know, he said, "Nothing trumps safety. Nothing does trump safety." And I don't think we can do too much at all to be safe. So I want to make sure that we are, it's very easy. I mean, I did those plans, you did those plans, but it's always great to have more eyes on those plans. So going back two months ago, I had asked for the IGA committee to review IEB and IEC, and I know Mr. Holbrook spoke about that last month as well. So when can we expect that that will come forward for the board?
Is it the will of the board to bring those two policies back?
Yes, we reached consensus about that last month, as far as I know.
Last month?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think.
It's fine with you to bring it back?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So do we need to take the consensus tonight on that?
I think, y'all are meeting this month, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I would just go ahead and throw it on your agenda to review it. I don't, I'm fine with it.
I think it needs to come back to the board.
I'd say it's okay.
They're the God we trust.
So do you want me to speak on that now, or do you want me to hold off? Because the policy's going to come back as written, so.
Why don't you wait till your comments? Because this is what this is supposed to be for, actually, is comments, and not the Q and A.
Yep, perfect.
Okay, so what, would I be able to get an answer to my question?
Well, when it comes his time.
And then would we be able to respond?
I'll give you an answer right now.
Yeah.
It's going to come, I mean, we'll bring it back, but it's going to be the exact same policy, and then we'll vote on it.
I have a question to that. We've already established that we're talking about something that's in the state law. Is there, is it a possibility for us to expand on it? Expand on what the policy says?
See, why not?
Okay.
Might also want to consult with the attorney, though, if we're, if you're talking about the state code.
Yes, see, if we can kind of go above and beyond to not just recognize what it is, but also to encourage in our curriculum, you know, maybe some more things that we can explain what the meaning behind everything, and then really get after it. It's not just recognizing it, it's also honoring and teaching what everything, what we're saying all this is about.
Well, a lot of that is in curriculum already, so you may want to check, like especially in the lower- in the lower grades.
And that's fine, and I, I do think when it, when it comes to that, you know, there's, there's other parts in history that I'm sure that we probably should, should recognize, such as the Bedford Boys, which was, was, was brought up, and, and, you know, I understand that that happens at, at lower school levels, but the level of understanding when you're in second grade is different than when you're in seventh grade, and is different when you're a junior. So I think it's important that maybe we, we take that and we just kind of expand on a little bit if, if, if we can.
I just think it needs to come back, yes. Also, last month, I asked for a report, Dr. Bergen, on the mid-year and third quarter and the end of the year student performance, and I haven't seen anything yet, so I was wondering when we might be able to get those numbers, because we didn't, we didn't get any mid-year grades, as far as I recall, maybe I'm mistaken, but I know third, third quarter and the end of the year, I haven't seen anything, and we should have all that data. Can we get that before the next meeting? And we had consensus from the board last month to get that.
Board would like, just wanna make sure I understand what we're requesting, the board would like grade distribution by division?
Yeah, like we did, we did that last year, so just follow the same thing we did last year.
Hold back.
Or, I mean, I mean, Dr. Woodford did, so she has that information, I'm sure.
You said that was the will of the board last month?
Yes, we, we, I, I asked, do you think it's important that we see this data? Everyone agreed, yes, they thought it was important that we needed to look at this data.
Once the data is official, correct?
No, this data should be, it's not the SOL data, it's the, it's the end of the year, I mean, the year's over, so all of the data they have should be current, up-to-date data. I don't think anybody's taking an, you know, a, a teacher-made end-of-the-year test anymore. So, we're still okay with that? I see people shaking their heads, okay. The other thing, and we are gonna work on that database for homeschool and private school students, so that we have that. The other thing I want to ask, too, is last August, I asked about common benchmarks, and I was told that they, they would take place, but when I was with Dr. Bergen at Stewartsville, we were told that they did have the first benchmark, they created their own second, second benchmarks, and then actually the teachers at Stewartsville were complaining, concerned, I should say, that they had a combination third, fourth quarter that was not very helpful because the students hadn't completed the fourth quarter. So I'm just trying, help me understand why we didn't have completed benchmarks, since I asked for that in August, and I was told we would have it.
Can you say that again? I'm not sure.
Okay, in, in last August, I just asked, I had asked the instructional team, are we gonna have common benchmarks, because you had a new program, I believe, and were we gonna have common benchmarks where we could look at common data across the different levels, elementary, middle, high school? And I was told, yes, we would. What I'm being told is that we had a first one, that people created their own second one, and that the last one was three and four together, and...
I think you were told incorrectly, we did have common benchmark. The, the Q and A benchmark covered the entire school year, and so they were able to get a different penalty, and so when they were finished covering the credit, then they gave the benchmark, so we did have that.
We, you did, okay.
That's good.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Okay, where are we also with the, we, last month, we also, I made a request for information about how to get going on the auditorium renovations that Ms. Harrison referred to, so where are we with that? Remember, I said, I'm not exactly sure how we go about that, and I think, Dr. Dewis, you were gonna look into how we do that, so where are we with that?
So, you know, Dr. Mealy, all the board members, we've had several reports on what we could do with auditorium, so we're crystal clear about what the potentials are, but we have to have a funding source, so where we are is we need to be advocating for additional funding. So one of the things I've talked with the board leadership about, and I've talked with my counterpart, and I've talked with members of the Board of Supervisors, is an opportunity for this board and that board to come together and talk about long-range facility needs, including the auditoriums and many other, $150 million in needs, to determine when and how we might fund all of these many projects through local, state, and federal funding sources. So, we'll, we'll, with, at the will of the board and through the leadership, I would like to plan for an opportunity for this board and the Board of Supervisors to come together and have this conversation about long-range facility needs, and this is certainly a key part of that conversation. Does that address your question?
Yes, I just want to make sure we're, we're moving forward and not just really kind of talking about it, but not taking some action to move forward, even if we're told no. I, I just think it's important for the public to know that we are, that we, we consider this to be important. We're sitting in Kennedy-era, you know, auditoriums, so they, they need to be upgraded, and especially in light of what Mr. Johnson had said last month about equity for the, the different fine arts programs.
And also what we've heard tonight from some of our public comments as well, but Dr. Mealy, in my report, I had mentioned that we do want to go and have community discussion at Stanton River High School and Liberty High School with the community, in which to let them know, you know, what our plans are, hear from them regarding their concerns, ways in which we could go about funding. So we want to take a discussion to them regarding it, okay?
That's a great idea. I also want to thank two people especially who are retiring, Patricia Knox, I don't know if I can add anything else to what you said about Patricia, she certainly was a force to be reckoned with when it came to the, the health and, and when it came to her nurses, and I just want to thank her publicly because she did a great job, she hired some fantastic nurses, and she held them accountable for really good healthcare and for our students in school, so thank you to her. Another person I really just want to thank, because I just don't even know how she did it, was Karen Arthur. I know she's not retiring, but she's leaving the position, and she also did a really great job, so I want to thank her for that. So best wishes for those people, I agree, who are retiring, you will love retirement. I also wanted to speak just for a moment to the two young ladies, Kylie and Lily, who spoke about the LGBT community. I can't speak for anyone else, but I, I think your words tonight were very brave, I'm sorry they're not here to hear this, but I think your words are very brave, and, you know, I am talking to you, and, you know, you're not wrong, and you are always welcome in my space, and I, and I think that, you know, I certainly don't dismiss you, I don't dismiss anybody who is different than, than I am, and the idea of inclusivity and, and, you know, equity is very important to me, no matter what your particular affiliation is. So they, you were very brave to not, to speak, and, and I appreciate that. One other thing is, I think, I don't know how the board feels about the sites that Mrs. Snead spoke about, is that something we want to make available on our webpage so that parents can access those sites from our webpage? Is that something we're not supposed to do? Or can we get that information out to parents so that they can access those sites and make appropriate decisions for their children?
I think that's something that we would need to look into further to see how we could implement it. It's, it's hard to, to make a, for, to be brought up instantaneous decision.
I will tell you, we are currently working on, around books and how to communicate with our parents about what books are being selected by their students or being required for their students, so I absolutely think the IGA can go back and look at those sites, but as a board, if we want to advertise it otherwise, I think that's a great idea, once we check it, but I did want you to know, we are looking at options to be included on emails, mandatory emails that go out to parents to notify them, and then provide resources of how, like you said, the parent can choose to look at the rating, not us giving the rating.
I think that's all I have, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mealy. Mr. Knobbs?
I was actually one of those board members who saw that movie, Whose Children Are They, it was a great movie, highly recommend it. Dr. Bergen, correct me if I'm wrong, next year, we are doing away with all mitigation, and it's gonna go back to pre-COVID status?
Yeah, just, you know, like before COVID and during COVID and after COVID, if you're sick, stay home, you know, sneeze into your elbow, wash your hands, you know, do common-sense things, but we're not going to, we're not gonna have a quarantine code, we're not going to talk about masking, although people certainly welcome to wear a mask, for whatever their medical reasons may be, we're not going to limit numbers, all, all of those things have been in place that helped us to keep school open and have kids in school to the extent that we could, will, will be a reset, unless this board tells me otherwise, or I'll bring to you if there's state or federal requirements, of which I am unaware at this time.
Other only thing is, just congratulations to all the graduates, hopefully got a watch over you in this next chapter of your life, because once adulthood hits, that's, that's a whole different life story there. Get gray hairs really fast, and then also huge congratulations to the uprising, eighth graders going to ninth grade, fifth graders, and first graders going to second grade, congratulations to all of them as well. And then, of course, I want to talk a little bit more about the safety. What are we gonna do far as our new safety strategy? Is that something that you're gonna speak on?
Yeah, I'll get that in a minute.
All right, and then the auditorium thing, I'm, I'm all for this renovation of auditorium, I'm not sure why it's such a big deal now, and it should have been done a long time ago when we, you know, we had a board that was, you know, all about performing arts, it should have been taken care of a long time ago when funding was available, but for now, we're taking the heat for it, and we'll let that be that.
Anything else?
Nope.
Daniels?
Thank you. Last meeting, we had discussion on moving items that were presented for informational to action items, and I understand the normal course of business is that we present the items first, and then we discuss, and then we vote on it at the next public meeting. I completely understand and respect the, the passion to, to do that and to move quickly, although I feel it was very important that we do pause, and the only reason why I really felt that is because when it's presented for an informational item, even if our minds are completely made up, we still owe it to the public to, to give them the information, let them digest it, and then give them an opportunity to reach out to us and, and give us their input. So we, we did allow that process to take place, and I'm thankful for that. I'm very happy that we passed the resolution to support parents' rights, given the events of the last two years and all the information in the news of other counties and states regarding curriculum, indoctrination, grooming, I did feel it was important to show that all of us together as Bedford County Schools stand with the parents. There was, there was an issue and there's a, a problem, and I think that we're able to put our foot down and resolve that. What else do I have? School safety, I know we're gonna talk about, just, I, I know that, that our team kind of got together and was willing to discuss everything and, and look at ways to potentially strengthen our plan. I, I'm assuming that every board member like me got quite a bit of emails and phone calls from concerned parents, and, and of course, we are all very concerned as well. They've offered a lot of good suggestions, as those suggestions come up, I'm gonna continue that, anything that I get, to, to forward those and pass those along. It was said here tonight, but it's, it bears repeating, that we up here on this board, I don't want to speak for the board, but I, I know the hearts of everybody up here, and we, you know, we don't want to hear that we can't afford to do any recommendations that get made, I think that it's important to understand that we can't afford not to do them. These are, these are our kids, so I think it's important that we, we, we work together to find a, a resolution to, to, to try to solve this problem and make our defenses as strong as they can be. There's also going to be two fundraisers for Jefferson Forest Cavalier Cheer, one on Saturday, June 11th, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Kroger on, on Forest Road, they're also gonna have another one on June 25th at the same location, they're raising money for uniforms, POMs, and to go to a, a cheer camp. I'm going to be making a donation for, for that, to help them raise money for that cheer camp, every dollar certainly helps. Ms. Harrison and Dr. Mealy, thank you for giving a shout-out to all our retirees, it was definitely, it was wonderful to hear, and it was very heartfelt, so thank you guys for that. And then congratulations to all our students and graduates as well, best of luck and continue to make Bedford County proud.
Yep.
All right, well, first of all, congratulations to the JF Boys Soccer and JF Baseball Teams, they are currently in Fredericksburg, Virginia, tonight to begin their state playoff tomorrow morning at 11:00 a.m., and then 1:00 p.m. tomorrow afternoon for baseball. So I have to give shout-out to the bu, to bus drivers that were there to carry those students, I can only imagine what they heard or saw or experienced, but I have to give a shout-out to Deanne Angus, she's one of our bus drivers at JF, I think she was more excited than the team, and so I really appreciate her and her enthusiasm and just having fun with the, the guys there, so. I did attend two of the three grad, graduations, I attended JF and Stanton River, I do apologize for not being able to attend Liberty, but I had family in town to celebrate my son Nolan, who graduated from JF that Saturday, and I have to give him a shout-out, he also graduated the, two weeks before from Central Virginia Community College, which is very exciting, so I'll have to give a shout-out to that program, three of my four have graduated from CVCC, and I won't embarrass Bella, but she's got one more year and she'll be the four of four, so congratulations to CVCC for an exceptional program. One of the things that I wanted to mention that we've heard a lot this week is around FMS competitive cheer, it's a club sport, they're being told that they can't do it because of the budget, and from what I understand, if it's a club sport, we have nothing to do with the budget, so not asking for an answer tonight, but I do want the staff to take a look at that, and I think the only thing they're asking us to do is provide transportation, which we're already doing for the JF team, so I don't understand why we can't combine the two and support both JF and FMS, and I'm not saying just support the Forest area, but if Liberty and Stanton River have those same teams, we would certainly want to do that. One of the things that, you know, I know we listen to comments and we're not supposed to respond back, which I didn't, but I would encourage people to have facts over emotions. Books were never asked to be banned, we wanted to look at the process and understand what the role of the parent was around those books, we'll continue to look at that, I'm not gonna apologize for asking for it, but books were never even asked to be banned, we wanted to understand the process. So again, facts over emotions. I was not here last month for CIP, but I want to be very clear of my stance on spending money when it comes to CIP, I've shared this with Ms. Harrison and Matt, I want to be very careful that we spend dollars on buildings that we may not have in five years, and I know we don't have a crystal ball to say, what schools are we gonna have, but we need to get, we need to be very clear with the community and parents, our numbers are declining, that's a known fact, our Board of Supervisors has a Bedford County comprehensive plan that does not plan to grow Liberty and Stanton River zone, now I'm not saying that won't change next, next week, next year, whatever, but we are the education system, we're prepared to provide facilities and education to our students. We do not recruit students, so the only way that we can get more students in those areas is for the, the Board of Supervisors to start recruiting businesses and families, and so what we do have a responsibility of is where we're spending money, and if we're spending money on schools that are at 50 or 60% capacity, and we have room to move those learners to other areas, then we need to be looking at possibility of closure, and I'm not saying we're closing anything, but it's our responsibility to take a look at that. So when I look at the CIP and I see $289,000 for a new roof in an area where we continue to... to decline in students, I want to make sure we're very careful before we approve it. And I know it will come to the board to approve those dollars, but I want to publicly say, we owe that to our community, not to spend dollars on buildings we won't have. So my phone, my email, why did you not vote for this resolution for teachers and staff? Well, it's very clear. All of that information that was in that resolution is in our teacher contracts and our staff. I mean, all of that information, we make a commitment and support our teachers and our staff. And so we absolutely stand behind you. There's no question. The reason why it was important to support a resolution around parental rights is because the previous board made a conscious vote of four to three to remove parental rights. I questioned it. The response was yes, and four board members voted to remove parental rights. And so the resolution about parental rights was to restore that faith back to our parents. And so I want to make it very clear, that's why I was willing to approve the resolution, because we had something to fix. We had to fix the parental rights and their trust. Several members asked the question of, why are they leaving? How do we get them back? That's step one, is making sure we've restored that faith back in our parents. So I don't want there to be any concern that we don't support teachers and staff. We do. We absolutely support you. Your contracts state that. Supporting what you want to do around your curriculum, I think you have that flexibility based on what staff is telling us. So I wanted to make sure that there's no emotion versus fact of Marcus Hill or any other board member does not support our teachers and staff. I'm out there. I'm in classrooms. I go to, I'm looking at Shayna because I apologize to her for not coming to Wizard of Oz this year, but, you know, you can't do it all. But there is support. We're out there. We are supporting our teachers. So I want to make that very clear, that there's no comments of, you know, split board. That's not true. So the reason for the resolution for the parental rights is because we needed to take On a positive note, after tonight, cupcakes at school live again. So one of those policies that were written a long time ago got rid of parents being able to come in and celebrate a simple birthday with their kids. And so we changed that policy. And so bring your cupcakes, communicate with your teacher, let them know what the plan is. But again, we're giving that right back to the parent, and of course, work with your teacher, and let's move forward on that. A couple of things that I want to make sure that I pose as questions publicly, not looking for staff to answer these tonight, but I want to make sure, you know, I'm going to be calling you and asking you. But I want to make them public because I've heard from my constituents, which, by the way, supported me 94%, so I do stand for my constituents. Schedule changes in middle schools and high schools. There's been a lot of, you know, conversation around that. What are the benefits of those schedule changes? And again, I'm not looking for answers tonight, but I think it's important for us to be able to get it back to our community to say, you're absolutely right. We did change this, and here's why. What are the benefits? And then how many new electives are being offered by this change? What are we getting out of changing this? Because it's affecting all three zones, either at high school or middle school. Exploratory curriculum that I've heard about at FMS, is this the same curriculum being offered at Stanton River and Liberty Middle? If not, why not? If it is, great. Just need to understand the differences. Who is involved in the exploratory curriculum, and what will it look like? And poor Karen and Josh, they're going to think I'm a broken record on this one, but why is yearbook being offered at Liberty Middle School and Stanton River Middle School but not at FMS? I want an answer. I want to understand the why. Parents want to know why we have extended the school day, but the instructional time remains the same. And I think that's primarily at the middle school. And so we need to understand, what does that get us? And why did we decide to do that? And then the last one is, again, just around communication and letting people know why we're changing. And I'm not saying all change is bad. We just need to understand it. Why did we remove connections? Learners used to use this time for homework and getting other work completed, and from what I'm understanding, we've pulled that away. And so, again, just trying to understand, and maybe that's FAQ for why we're changing the schedule and how all of that benefits and what changes. All right, Ms. Kirby, I'm done.
I was able to attend all three Bedford County High School graduations. For those of you who were not there, you missed a great time. I got to see a son. A father handed his son his diploma. Young man walking across to get his diploma, and all of a sudden, he did a backflip. That was, but I saw proud parents and even proud grandparents. And most of all, the proudest were the graduates. But most of all, I saw greatness. I'd like to extend a final graduation, congratulations to the class of 2022. Keep doing great things. Also want to give kudos to Mr. Hill. His son graduated from JF during the first graduation, so it was a day of celebration for his family. He, of course, left to spend time with his family, but surprisingly, he sent me a text and said, tell him to have a chair ready for him for Stanton River. I'm coming back. So that was really noticed, and it was really appreciated. Thank you for doing that. Speaking of graduations, I have received a lot of negative feedback about not having the fifth grade graduations anymore and having them as celebrations. There was, I think we need to do what we can to make sure we bring back the earlier graduations, call them graduations, make sure we have parents in there. We don't have mitigation strategies anymore. We have no reason to keep anyone out from having a graduation. So I think we should go back to our traditional ways. I want to echo everyone here. Congratulations to the retirees. I hope you enjoy your time. You've earned it. Go forth and live, and don't worry about your time clock anymore. Last week, Mr. Hill, Dr. Bergen, our safety director Scott Simmons, and I met with Sheriff Miller and three of his deputies. I was both pleased and surprised at the number of safety measures that both entities have in place to protect our schools. As a parent, I'm much more at ease sending my children to school. I'm even more pleased with progress at the meeting and the continued commitment from the sheriff's office and the schools to form additional collaborative teams to further improve school safety. So we're going to keep, it's going to be an ongoing process, but we do have a lot of good, solid safety measures in check. I also attended the parent listening event for LHS Athletics. The number of parents that showed up was outstanding. Listening to them have made, listening to them have made the opportunity to voice their concerns was very informative. Mr. Tucker assured all the parents that he was there for them and encouraged parents to reach out to him directly to voice their concerns. What he doesn't know about, he can't fix. I would encourage all the concerns to reach out to him. I would encourage anyone who can afford a solution to any of the concerns to reach out also. Several years ago, I'm sure, and this is one I would like for us to seriously consider because it would not be very expensive at all. And I'm sure you remember us talking about this several years ago. When we moved the baseball field from here, from Liberty up to Liberty Middle School, we installed the press box and the bathrooms up there. We went above and beyond and put those in. And honestly, I'm surprised no one has filed a Title IX suit against us. But it would not cost hardly anything to put in a press box and some bathrooms up at the softball field here. We talked about how easy it would be, tap into the water line at the shop, and just run them straight up. Could we possibly, Mr. Delus, could we possibly get an estimate of how much that would cost and maybe do some of that with carryover funds?
We certainly can. We have our records from the biggest project in time, but...
Calculate for the inflation, which is through the roof? Okay, thank you very much. On another liberty note, be on the lookout for announcements from Mr. Tucker regarding the need for volunteers for a campus spruce up. He was looking for anyone who can help out, help clean out the flower beds, do some pressure washing, and help get the campus looking its best. Also, if anyone could help get donations of mulch or landscaping rocks, it would be most appreciative. And please feel free to contact Mr. Tucker for any further information. Congratulations to Liberty graduate Melie Thompson. She had an amazing freshman season with Clemson softball. She broke a Clemson softball record for pitching a no-hitter in her first-ever postseason game and the first hosted by Clemson. She helped them advance to the super regionals. Additional congratulations to JF graduate Isaac Simmons. Isaac was on the LU golf team with an amazing record as they advanced to the NCAA national championship for the fourth year in a row. But in addition to that phenomenal season, Simmons also had the opportunity to compete at the local level to qualify for the U.S. Open. He had the third-best finish with an amateur, of an amateur, at three over par for 36 holes. I even read that his dad, Scott Simmons, was his caddy. Last month, Ms. Hairston made comments about her motion to amend the agenda and have the resolutions to an action item. She made reference to the waiving of the rule of informational one month and voting to the second. She made the name change for, to of BSTC to Susie Gibson. She then challenged the board to consistency. I'd like to take a moment to touch on this. About six and a half years on the board, the standard, and I believe best practice, has always been to present the item as informational one month and action the second. This is designed, this is designed for the public to also be made aware of what's going on and give them the opportunity to be able to reach out to us and weigh in on their thoughts and concerns. Also, the month's time, research time between the informational and the action affords this time to do additional research and ask additional questions, which is nothing but advantageous to the final vote. The constant waiving of this practice, in essence, is robbing the stakeholders of their opportunity to be involved and informed as well as having, as well as us having time to make sound decisions. While I understand that for deadlines and extenuating circumstances, sometimes a month waiver is necessary, however, I will continue to stand behind the practice of presentation one month and action for the next. Finally, I ask that you please continue to pray for Uvalde Texans and hope that they continue to heal. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Ms. Madden Chairman.
I have a motion by Dr. Mealy, second by Mr. Nelmes. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Meeting adjourned.